Okay, I will convene the September meeting of the State Board of Education. We are at St. Johnsberry Academy. We are at the Charles Hosmer Morse Center for the Arts. And as far as I know, there is no relationship.
As far as we know.
Our first order of business is to turn the meeting over to the headmaster of St. J Academy, Tom Lovett. But I want to first thank you for that wonderful tour that you just gave us. Really gave us a terrific sense of the great work that St. Johnsberry Academy is doing for the Vermont educational system. So, thank you. And I'll turn it over to you, Tom.
Well, first, just welcome and thank you for agreeing to meet here. It's an honor to host you. And it's a beautiful day. Hopefully, this venue will suffice for your meeting, but we've been looking forward to hosting you for a while. A few words about St. Johnsberry and what you just saw on the tour. None of that would be possible without us having a twofold identity. One is an independent school with an independent board that has no term limits and has a stability that refreshes itself with new board members every six years or so. We don't need term limits. We find that that takes care of itself as people get on and off the board. But that stability of vision has created the campus that you saw. It also helps in raising money. As I said, nothing that you saw today, as far as a stick, a brick, or a square plot of ground, was funded with taxpayer dollars. It was all alternative or private funding. It also allows us to be innovative and responsive with our curriculum and our supports. When we see a need for a program, we're able to respond to it pretty quickly as an independent school. And if we see something in the market that we think would entice students from around the world or around the country to come here, we're able to add it. I do want to mention the second part, though, which I think is important, especially in the work that you do. From our founding, we've been a school deeply connected to the local community. And as we've become a world-class boarding school, we recognize that if this area, if the Northeast Kingdom and specifically the town of St. Johnsberry is not thriving, then it's very hard to attract students from around the world to spend $50,000 a year to come here. And so, we are active partners in the cultural institutions here. We are active partners in economic development in some ways that I mentioned along the tour. But we really do want the best for all age groups, from infant to senior citizen. We want this to be a healthy place. And so, we have a lot of programs outside of what would be a normal high school education program to help make that happen. I know that there's some questions about our graduation rates and where our kids go. And because we accept a wide range of students, students who function below the first grade level, to students who are twice exceptional on the autism spectrum, but also very talented. And then, we have students who are AP scholars, some of the best in the country. Over 80%, almost 90%, go to two- or four-year school. About 7% go directly into employment. And about 3% go into the military. Because of the complexity of our student body, the number of international graduates, for example, it's hard to track how many graduate in four, five, and six years. Also complicating that is the local students who go to, say, CCV or Linden State, who find it financially difficult to complete their education in successive years. Our rates are probably lower than they would be in a more affluent or homogenous community. And I think that second point about the cost of higher education is important when you look at the value of dual enrollment. And I know it's come under some attack in some states, but for $100 for three college credits, for a student in the Northeast Kingdom to be able to transfer those credits and really get a leg up on their freshman and maybe their sophomore year, that's a real boon for our kids in as far as aspiring to do great things once they leave here. So, we have very good partners in dual enrollment, and we think that that's going to help raise the rates of completion in four, five, and six years.
Thank you. Are there questions of the headmaster? Mark?
I've got them answered.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We're going to enjoy our day here. We've got a lot ahead of us, but thank you for getting us off to a great start.
Thank you again for coming and seeing our campus. I hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
Why don't we, let me first remind folks, if you have not signed in already, there's a sign-in sheet over on my right here, so please sign in if you have not signed in yet. We'll go around the table and ask the board members to introduce themselves. I'm Stephen Morris, the Chair of the State Board of Education, from down south in Wyndham County.
I'm Sean Marie Oler from Bennington.
I'm Connor Salamano, non-voting student member from Rutland High School.
Kristy Hewling, and I'm from Jeffersonville, Vermont, and I have my daughter Cora.
Who's a full board member, by the way. This is her, I believe this is her 10th or 11th meeting that she's attended.
Yeah, probably 11th meeting at this point, so she should have voting rights.
I'm keeping track.
Rainbow Chan, voting student representative, Winuski.
Stacy Weinberger from Burlington.
Mark Perrin from Middlebury.
Peter Pelz from Woodbury.
Rebecca Holcomb, Agency of Education.
Thank you. So, again, if you haven't signed in, please sign in. Are there members of the public that wish to be heard this morning? Yes. For the record, would you state your name and the reason you are here?
My name is Rheda Dunlepp, and I'm here for homeschoolers. I'm also from the town of Woodbury, where Peter lives.
Can you speak up a little?
Can you hear me all right?
There's a lot of background noise.
There's a fan going, so if you could speak up, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Would you mind if this is...
No, I don't. Yep, no problem. My name is Rheda Dunlepp, and I'm a homeschool advocate here in Vermont. I am also a retired homeschooler. I homeschooled four, all four of my children, K-12. My youngest is now 27, the oldest is 34. Three of them still live in Vermont, two of them own a business here. One of the reasons I'm still around is that I like homeschooling. And I have the opportunity and the ability to keep an eye on the statute. Because what the statute was, 166B was put in place in 1987, and what it did is the agency and homeschoolers are two sides of one coin melded together by that statute. So, there's a process in place that we all follow. And sometimes, the process gets a little off-kilter, as it did this past summer during the enrollment process. The agency changed a form, and it caused some confusion, but that was not the only thing. It was a perfect storm. We had a teacher who took the form literally and didn't give any information, even though the guidelines still said the information was required. And then, she wouldn't also update parents' enrollments, which threw parents into the incomplete status, the letter started. There's a lot of other things surrounding that to create this perfect storm. But I've since spoken with Secretary Holcomb and with Claire Shaughnessy, and we're working through the conflict. And I just have some homeschooling families here today to let you all know that we're here, we're active, and we care, and we want to work with the agency. Because it's really about the process. If the process is working, the state's interests can be satisfied in the education of the children, and our right to home educate our children is protected. And that's really what the statute was for. And every four or five years, there seems to be a bump in the road, and it goes back down. So, I guess in a way, you could say, for the homeschooling movement in Vermont, I'm institutional knowledge, because I've been through this before. And parents who are, you know, they're enrolling, they're educating children, they don't have time to do this. I've also worked as a lobbyist at the State House for a few years on, you know, school choice issues and education issues. So, the skill set is there for me to help them keep an eye on this, and we're just here today to let you know that. When the statute was put into place, a position was given to the agency called the "home study consultant." I don't know if that's an official title. I don't know where that is in the process or who that is, but this person has, by tradition, always been a homeschooler or a retired homeschooler. And we tend to look at Bryn Reed as our home study consultant, because she was a homeschooler. She homeschooled special needs kids. She knows this process. She knows a lot of the history of the statute that I know. So, that's one person that we like to turn to. So, I know that Karen Agnew held that position before. I don't know where the title is now, but that's someone that we look to, and we know. This conflict is almost over. There will probably be a couple hearings called out of it, just to get the additional information. A couple of families, I think, want to stand on principle because of the confusion. And once lawyers are involved in the agency and hearings, I, as an advocate, kind of step back and let that process go forward, because I really can't do anything about it, anyway. When that's over, Secretary Holcomb, we want to work with you. I thank you for, you and Claire, for the response that you've given. I know that you all are, you know, if parents get this little bit of information to them, you have a 24-hour turnaround time. Thank you, because these children are not enrolled anywhere at the moment. We call it "technical truancy." It's not a legal term. These kids are being educated, they are being cared for, it's about paperwork. And in this particular instance, these parents were caught between a new form and one teacher's interpretation of it, because these enrollments focus on one teacher's letters. So, I, you know, there's a whole history there. But I just want to thank you and let you know that we want to work with you.
Thank you. Do you want to be smart?
I want to thank you, too, for coming. And I want to thank the homeschooling parents, who also are here today. And I know this is incredibly important, and I've had the privilege of hearing from some of you as well. And I know how much you care about your children, or I know you would never make this investment. So, I want to start by saying that. That said, I do think this was a bit of a perfect storm. We have been moving systematically through the agency and putting all of our application processes online, because we actually find it does save trouble for some parents in some cases if you can submit. We have many parents who run to our office, you know, to try to drop off forms physically, because they can't use the post office, it doesn't get there in time, things like that. So, if we could do it online, I think it would save us time, but it would also save families time. When we transitioned, we kept the forms the same, but we did have this one issue with one individual teacher. And really, what it did do was highlight a need to just sit down and have a conversation again. And I actually think it's a wonderful time to have that conversation, because even though perhaps the homeschool statute hasn't changed, there are other statutory changes, which we feel the homeschool community would want to know about. One of them, for example, is some of the opportunities around dual enrollment. And we know an increasing number of our homeschooling families are also using dual enrollment to supplement the education that they provide their children. And so, one of the things that we would like to do is go through some of our other forms and paperwork and figure out how to look at them through a homeschool lens, and also make some of those opportunities available more broadly to our homeschool. So, my hope is this is the beginning of a conversation, and we will be in touch and go back and look at some of those other aspects as well. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for coming today to show the importance that you place on this. Let's work together.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Homeschooling and teacher, I'm not, can you explain that situation?
Do you want to answer it? Me, too.
Well, I think, you know, I don't want to go too down the technical road, but there is an end-of-year assessment that's required, just to, as a way, either we have to look at the inputs of your program, the work that you're doing, and particularly if you're running a progressive curriculum, it's difficult and time-consuming to document that upfront before you've actually delivered. So, the other option is this end-of-year assessment, which is when a certified teacher evaluates or looks at the evidence of learning and just documents for the state's purposes that you actually have made progress. It was in the case of one individual where we, there was no information, so it was not possible to make that determination. What we've been trying to do is work with people to resolve this as quickly as possible. Our primary goal is not disrupting the work that you're doing with your children to continue their education. That has to be the first priority. And as you said, this is a paperwork issue where we just need to work through it. And we know that anyone who has brought us a portfolio, we've been able to resolve this within 24 hours. Most of the families affected have now resolved, gotten their plans that are moving forward. And there are a couple that we are willing to work as hard as we can in partnership to try to resolve, so that we can move forward in a productive way. But there has to be, for the state's purposes, some evidence of continued learning, and it's really a safeguard. It's just to make sure that there isn't, you know, of all the wonderful programs that are taking place, that there isn't a single child who perhaps isn't learning and isn't progressing, who might need a little bit more attention.
Yeah, and I can add to that, because I probably can say a little more. Most of the teachers that do the assessment spend a tremendous amount of time with the children. They meet the children, they see the children's work, they visit them in their homes quite often. This particular teacher in question did that. The parents got an excellent assessment. It's what she gave the state that was not sufficient. And, you know, knowing the situation, I, you know, I wondered when this would happen, that she would give too little, and then we would have this conflict of the state saying, "No, that's not enough." Basically, what the teacher letter needs to contain is, "I saw the children, I saw their work, I tested them, they read to me," you know, "how I did the assessment. And then, you know, in science, I saw a solar system model, and they had built a pumping heart. And then, I go on to history, and, you know, they studied China, and they had, you know, samples, Great Wall." It's that detail of what the teacher saw that's missing from these enrollments. And it's supposed to be there. I worked very hard with Commissioner, then Commissioner Kate in 2006. That's exactly what we set up in the current statute and in the current, the old teacher form, the guidelines. And that's what was missing from her letters, and she wouldn't supply it. And so, it caught parents in the middle of this really perfect storm.
Right. And what many parents did was they immediately brought in the work samples that they'd shared with the teacher, and within a very short order, Bryn and others at the agency were able to resolve this. We will continue to work through that, and what we'd like to do is work together to avoid this situation next year, because we believe that homeschooling parents, like every school or parent or educator in the state, should begin focused on the child. And that has to be the goal.
The advice that was given to all of the parents caught in this was to comply, from me. Because what, the agency wasn't asking for more information, they just wanted what was supposed to be given. And, you know, families, they don't want to go to a hearing process. It's not pleasant. It can be very daunting. I don't think these will be that difficult, because we're trying to resolve something that's not the parents' fault. But yeah, most of the parents complied. I told them, "Comply, because there's nothing you can do about this. Get your children safely enrolled, and then we'll work on this." And that's kind of where we are. And I just wanted, you know, to meet the secretary. I do apologize for not coming to meet you sooner. I should have. But things were going smoothly, you know, and when a crisis arise, that's when people, you know, come out of the woodwork.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Are there other members of the public that wish to be heard this morning? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and I believe the only thing that's on the consent agenda this month is the minutes from our August 23 meeting. There was one correction that was found after the minutes were posted, and this actually has some relevance to Agenda Item M later in the day. At the end of the day, after we discussed the filing of the 2200 Series Rules, Sean Marie made a motion to vote to authorize the State Board Chair to hire counsel and any other necessary staff of the rulemaking process. The motion was seconded by Mark. So, with that correction, if you're comfortable with that, I would say that the minutes are in order for, the consent agenda is in order for a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. The move by Sean Marie, seconded by Peter. Any discussion?
Just that the newly printed minutes will be posted and exchanged for the old ones.
Yes.
Yes.
And if anyone cares to see the minutes as they were corrected, I have a copy here. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda has been approved. Board announcements. Does any member care to make any announcements? I know Mr. Mathis is not here this morning, so this will probably be a shorter section. Yes, Krista?
So, actually, Cora and I just returned from Iceland at a conference, looking at the Atlantic Rim Collaboratory instead of Collaborative. Interesting. But it's the governments of Iceland, Ireland, Scotland, Finland, Aruba, the province of Ontario, and the states of Vermont and California. I'm not sure how that constitutes the Atlantic Rim. California is a little bit of a stretch, but it was a great conference, because it brought together all these countries in looking at equity in education. And it was a really powerful conference, because learning from these various systems and seeing what their challenges are and their successes, and being able to share that with ourselves. I know it was really great to think about Iceland, which has half the amount of people, roughly the same amount of children in public schools, and thinking about the challenges they have with geography, and coming up with opportunities for those in some of the smaller schools, and sometimes where there's only four or five students per grade. So, some of the common issues that we have. Talking with Ireland and coming up with, how do you fund special education, and how do you make that work, and providing opportunities for everybody, especially in those smaller schools. So, it was a really great collaborative, coming together and thinking about, sort of, what vision do we share, and how do we make more equity for our children, not just in Vermont, but learning from our partners around the world. And also, I just want to say that it was so nice to be part of the Vermont delegation, because Rebecca is so respected worldwide. So, it was just, I know we love her here in Vermont, but her fan club extends outside of Vermont into the world. And so, it was a pleasure to see that and to see how Vermont's status is seen compared to those countries. When you have Finland is really excited Vermont's there, and everybody always talks about the Finnish model, but, you know, they wanted Vermont at the table to be part of the conversation. And I hope this is a first time the meeting has happened, so every, all those governments had officials there, and there are other countries represented, not by their officials, but Norway had representation, Australia had representation, and hoping that this continues on in the future. It's a little, it's questionable how that will look in the future, but I know the Vermont delegation, we were really hoping that it might look at going and doing site visits between these different countries and being able to evaluate systems. And it was very therapeutic to try to explain the Vermont system to other people, and it made me think we were reviewing this packet in the map that was, I think it was Addison, it was for Bristol, showing what the governance looks like, trying to explain that to somebody from Ireland, and they're like, "What? How does this work?" The local, so it was very interesting trying to explain your system to somebody else and having them kind of mirror it back to you and asking you good questions. So, hoping that process can continue. But it was a pleasure to go, and hopefully, it will continue. That's kind of the, up in the air, where this is going.
Thank you. Rainbow?
So, as I mentioned last meeting, I said I was going to be attending the Next Generation High School Summit in Washington, DC. I attended that September 12, last Monday, and it was a really exciting experience. I got to meet teachers, administrators, US Department of Education employees, and I got to shake hands with the Secretary of Education. I debated on not washing my hand that day, but aside from that, it was a really interesting experience, because there was a lot of discussion about next-generation schools and what that looked like in the country of America. And a lot of these processes included advancing courses, including more APs, dual enrollment, early college opportunities, as well as social, emotional learning and technology implementation. And it's kind of interesting to see and hear from teachers and students from all over the country, because Vermont seems to be pretty ahead of the game, in the sense of these different things that we call next-generation high schools. Vermont is ahead of a lot of schools, in the sense of what I've heard. And just making connections with the other students as well. We had students from California, South Carolina, Kentucky, and Boston, Massachusetts, and Vermont, obviously. And it was really interesting to hear their stories and experiences as well. So, we had a kind of a student roundtable panel, where we invited administrators, Secretary, the US Department of Education employees around to basically hear our discussions about student voice and what that meant in our education, and really defining what education means to us as students, and really relaying that information to them. And so, it was a wonderful experience.
Thank you. Stacy?
I got to, had the honor of serving as Rebecca's designee at the Chindon South School District Organizational Meeting. And it was really quite exciting, maybe because I'm that kind of wonky sort of policy person, but it was exciting to see this group come together to celebrate this kind of new status as a school district. In particular, Superintendent Pykney had me highlight basically 15 years' worth of work, three different study committees who had worked through these issues, looked at opportunities for students, looked at local control, looked at voice, and kept striving for like, "Okay, it's not right at this time. Okay, maybe it's not right at this time, but we'll merge these things, we'll collaborate this way." And then, finally, we're ready to make this step. And it was exciting to see how proud they were of how much, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of hours of people's time to make this happen, and expressed our enthusiasm for their, for this great next step. So, it was nice to be there.
Thank you. Other board announcements. If not, we will move on to the secretary's report.
First of all, I'm glad to hear that, Stacy. And as somebody in that area once said to me, "It's not really about local control, it's about local responsibility." And what they were saying is, "It was really a privilege to be part of rethinking how they would provide for their kids into the future." And I think that just came through so loudly in their, in their conversations.
Especially, because it wasn't, oh, just easy. Like, it was clear that it was hard, and they made it work.
They did. They worked, and they made it work. And they figured out how they'd work together to make it work. So, that was nice. I just, I am grateful to Krista for giving such a nice update. Thank you. I think the Vermont contingent did very well, and I think people across the board were impressed by the breadth of stakeholder involvement in Vermont. The only thing I would add to your summary is that one of the outcomes that, or suggestions coming out, was also to do a student summit with respect to what are the opportunities to learn students have, what's getting in the way of improving, enhancing those opportunities to create a more structured opportunity for students to have voice in some of the conversations that we're seeing at the state level. So, hopefully, that will move forward. I wanted to just update you. I know that you've seen in the news an article about the developmental learning measure, the DLM assessment, and I just wanted to let you know that that is a symptom of a larger issue that we've had, in that nationwide and national policy, there's been increased writing of assessments into policies, so that we actually have to implement them in a certain way. Because it's an industry with a high threshold for entry, it's very expensive to put on one of these assessments. In a sense, it's a bit of a captive market. There aren't just new assessments you can plug and play if one of your existing relationships breaks down. But what we are struggling with is a gradual transfer of costs associated to these assessments from states to test makers. And this was a particularly concerning issue, where there was an increase in the cost of the assessment, as the University of Kentucky, which hosts it, decided to take a 50% cut on the assessment. But in addition to that, there was an issue around how the remaining costs would be allocated among member states. And there was a decision to shift from a current model to a combination model of a flat fee and per-student fee, that would have resulted in an extraordinary increase in costs to the state. And we had concerns about how the vote was conducted, because it seemed to be conducted in a way that really suppressed participation. There was no notice to chiefs of states prior to the vote, and then it was made in a way that was really detrimental to the majority of the states, but in particular to small states. And I surface that, because an ongoing theme of our national advocacy with the US Department of Education and through our congressional delegation have been some of the unique challenges of small states, when we are in a policy context that increasingly favors large systems. And what we're seeing is that the cost of doing business on a per-people basis is rising here much more quickly than it is in some of our larger states, because of a series of policy decisions. So, I just wanted to make sure that you'd seen that, because that is a theme that you will, you will hear again. And when we advocate for the, you know, for Vermont with respect to the Perkins, Perkins legislation, which is now coming up, and the child nutrition legislation, which we expect to move, you may hear us repeatedly use the word "small-state minimum." And that's because in many cases, and it is also true with ESSA, those minimums have not been increased in 20 years. At the same time, cost of business has increased, so that we used to be able, for example, with Title I, support nine and a half staff, now we can support three. And they have to do all the same things they used to do, and more. So, this does create some acute pressures in Vermont with respect to cost, and we need to keep advocating for those small-state minimums, because if they don't keep pace with the cost of inflation at the very minimum, what we are seeing is an increasing portion of our available funds are being spent on things like assessment and not on improving teaching and learning. And we want to work to keep those funds diverted towards teaching and learning, because that's what we think really makes a difference for our kids. On a different issue, Stephen, oh, go ahead.
In case we are asked, what increase would be needed to even get it back to the level where it was 20 years ago? level where it was 20 years ago? From the, so if we're talking to politicians and...
We can get, we can give you that because we've done some internal analysis. It's different for each of the pieces of federal legislation, but we can, we can give it to you. And part of it, the other constraining factor is for some of it, we also have, for some of our indirects, we have to provide a state match. Our general fund has been cut over 40%, almost 45% since 2007. So we are somewhat constrained in our ability to draw down federal funds, also by the extent of our general fund. If the state doesn't make a state commitment, it limits what we are able to do with federal resources. So we're constrained on both sides right now. And what we're trying to do is be as smart as possible about the choices we make and as aggressive as possible in keeping those costs down. So we can maintain flexibility to drive our resources into instruction and school improvement and not into assessment and fixed costs. That's what we have to try to do. So if we sound like we're really pushing those themes, that's what we're doing and why we're doing it. On a related issue, Stephen had asked for just an update on funding, and Bill will give you the final budget at the next meeting. But you should know that the August 31st year-to-date expenditure shows that you're on a very similar spending track to last year at this time. The fiscal year 15-year end of, end to fiscal year 17 budget comparison that you got in your packet shows that the board spent about $20,000 less than its budget amount last year. So if you maintain your current spending pace, you should anticipate about the same amount, about a $20,000 leftover sort of reserve in your budget for next year that you could choose to use for other priorities.
Let me interrupt just briefly. I've had a couple of conversations with Bill Talbot. He has other duties at the agency, so we weren't able to put the budget together. But what we've talked about is looking at, and it was in the packet as usual, the budget that we get on a monthly basis really goes back to the days when the agency was a department. So Bill and I are trying to reorganize that and which will also allow us hopefully to address the staffing issue for the, for the rule process. So hopefully at the October meeting, we'll have that and we'll present that to you for your approval. Excuse the interruption.
Will you just finish the last two sentences before this is done?
Oh.
Thank you.
Any questions of the secretary?
Yeah, I'll ask one question. Is that surplus of $20,000 carry forwards?
No.
I know.
The agency did not.
I don't think we need executives here. I'm sorry.
I got about the $20,000.
You don't have 40,000. You look like you will have 20,000.
Yeah. Apparently, I asked maybe the same question. Does that 20,000 get transferred? Apparently it was gobbled up elsewhere before it got transferred.
You mean before you asked?
Yes. Yes. Any other questions or comments of Rebecca? We are way ahead of schedule.
Could I interject then one thing?
Sure.
Although I would like to hear your suggestion on making up for that. Rebecca, I was just wondering if you might reflect on any news for the opening of school throughout the state?
Just that I'm incredibly proud to work in Vermont. It was interesting. I'll tell you a funny story. We often spam, I apologize to anyone here who's in a school district, but we often send out an extraordinary number of communications at the beginning of this year, any year. And this year, I got more responses back from principals and superintendents as if I was someone on their staff telling me what to do. So I think they'd replied all to me without realizing that's what they'd done. And it just sort of made me laugh and we had a couple of sort of follow-ups. I think people are really busy. And so they're, they're moving very quickly. But I, I will say that I am consistent, I mean, it was interesting to go to Iceland and have these conversations because what I realize is the very, very high level of public engagement, but the high level of commitment of our educators. And really, we have, we have such an extraordinary asset in that statewide. And people are working very hard right now. I think, you know, one of the takeaways from looking at some of the research that was presented is that in systems where they really commit to equity and child well-being, first and foremost, the academics tend to follow. Those are the highest scoring systems in the world. And it was wonderful to me to come back to Vermont. And when I come back, get in my email box, all these comments from people from the field who are really concerned about and committed to issues of equity and committed to issues of child well-being, including how to better support and respond to the children who are living in trauma in our state in increasing numbers. And it's that commitment to those two core, you know, values and principles that I think is going to make us a strong system. And I know it's hard. I know people are working incredibly hard at the board level, at every level, to try to figure out how to do better for our kids. We can't change declining enrollments. We can't change some of the demographic changes that are taking place in the state and having pretty profound impacts on all of our systems, both independent schools and public schools. But what we are seeing is a lot of resourcefulness. We're seeing a lot of people rolling up their sleeves and trying to put aside where we've been and how we used to do things and try to figure out how we can work together to protect how we care about the most. So that's, that's really what I would say.
And if we're trying to fill time, just one of the benefits, just one of the benefits of traveling with an infant was that parents around Iceland would come up to me and have conversations about schools and about leave and about all these different things. And it was really great to hear from so many parents. I mean, I wouldn't have had those conversations otherwise. So many parents about how they felt about their system and how their preschool starts at two years old. And seeing what is given to them at two and how they feel like their children. One thing that we didn't mention, a lot of the other systems talk about is a child's happiness. And that was a big thing that, you know, we don't really ever talk about on a board, are our children happy? But a lot of those countries were very focused on are their kids happy? And not just are they learning in the test, but that real idea of happiness. And, you know, one parent asked me, like, when your schools, how do they teach compassion? And it was like, we don't have standards around teaching compassion. But in Iceland, it's an expectation that that's what's being taught to the children. So it was very interesting to sort of see those, have those conversations outside the conference, just with everyday parents and just how they feel about their systems. And I think all of our schools do that and they focus so much on the children that we don't always recognize that that's what they're, they're actually taking care of their happiness.
Did they talk at all about financial literacy at all or financial well-being?
A lot of them talked about they felt all their basic needs were met, and so they felt pretty happy. Because they have the free healthcare, free education through college, and their maternity leave is four months for both parents, plus an extra four months that the couple can decide how to use. So it could be that the mother stays home eight and the father four, or they could both do six. So they have a general sense of this happiness of that they feel like their government is taking care of them. And then, so they're looking for meaning. They have a very high expectation of their systems about arts. That was a thing that I heard from the, actually Icelandic delegation and then on the streets from parents, is talking about how the high expectation for art and music in their children's lives. Even in small schools, it's expected they have lessons every day for music. And they wouldn't expect, they wouldn't take anything less because they say music brings happiness, literature brings happiness. So they look at it in a different lens, but they demand those things of the system. But nothing particular about financial literacy.
So Rebecca, I guess what this points to, and I, I think we talk about it all the time, is the well-being of students. But we, we cross departments or agencies in that. So there, there always has to be, you know, collaboration and working together with Agency for Human Services because we're, we're, as much as we talk about, you know, the silos and I hate that expression, that, you know, but we are, we're, we're different agencies in different areas and people have to work at working together. So I, it just points out that it's not really a fluid system, although we try and make it that.
Right. Well, I think in that vein, I mean, one of the reports I looked at again on Monday was a report that was submitted to the legislature a couple of years ago on what are the supports that we have in place for mental health in schools. And we actually are spending quite a bit. I think there are some questions about whether we're targeting those dollars as effectively as we could across sectors. And so I think there is room for those conversations and certainly I hope we can surface them and continue to have them as, as the systems move forward. Steven, I did think of one other thing I probably should mention because you've seen in the newspaper, and that's pre-K. I just wanted to go.
Really hard to hear.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of ambient.
Is it over soft because you guys are sweaty deaf?
I got it.
They're gonna come at lunchtime and put in a different microphone.
Okay.
Well, the other thing is we can move closer together later.
Okay. If you also can lean into the microphones, I think that probably helps. Then at least you have the record.
I suspect no one's having trouble hearing me. Is that correct?
Crystal.
He's good at that.
And you're facing them too, so that's good.
You had one more comment?
I just, I just wanted to update you. You've probably also read this in the media, but that pre-K Act 166 has begun. It is moving very, very smoothly and we're hearing very, very positive reports from some parts of the state and we're absolutely thrilled about that. And this is another extraordinary opportunity to provide additional support to two young three and four-year-olds at a really critical time of their lives and make sure that they have this opportunity through play-based learning to develop the baseline skills through play that we know are so critical to success in life and school beyond. That said, there have been some slight challenges. As you know, the legislature's been very active in the last couple of years around Act 1, 255, background checks, including fingerprint-supported background checks for all providers and all people who might have unsupervised contact with kids. You also know that the federal government recently rolled out new regulations for all childcare providers, which also require a fingerprint-supported background check. Because of the way this law is structured, we now have school districts that are working with as many as 24 different providers. And those providers may each also be working with six to eight different school districts. So part of the challenge is to figure out how, in the minimally burdensome way, and the most efficient way, and the least costly way, to meet that, that responsibility to do the fingerprint-supported background check, but not do it in a way that's duplicative. So that, that no one is having to get fingerprinted eight times for eight different systems, things like that. So CDD is doing the fingerprint-supported background checks. There is a bit of a backlog or delay that is affecting the rollout in some areas. And I did write a transition relief memo, another one, just to try to increase the tools that systems have to, to give them a little bit more flexibility so that they could try to serve that intent of providing access to children while still serving and meeting their obligation to ensure child safety through the fingerprint-supported checks. That's just trying to expand their portfolio a bit so that they could meet those dual goals, but in a more flexible way.
We are way ahead of schedule. So what I would propose is we take a five-minute break. And if Claire is willing, that we would take, when we come back, take Agenda Item L up unless there's objection from the board. And perhaps we could take up Agenda Item M before we move on, while we wait for the candidates of the Teacher of the Year to arrive. That, and then if, if Donna arrives early, we will perhaps take up the Small Schools Status Report as well. So we will reconvene in five minutes. Okay, I'll reconvene the meeting. And we're going to go to Agenda Item L, post-secondary rules. As I recall this, we've actually approved the rules, but the agency found an error and Claire has corrected it. And so she's here to explain that to us today. And we will need to reapprove these rules, which will not be on the October ICAR agenda.
Correct. So thank you. So let, explain a little bit...
For the record, state your name, please.
Claire O'Shaughnessy, Agency of Education Staff Attorney. Okay, so if you recall, we were here last month and we, I remember trying to cram this particular Agenda Item in before lunch, but the board chair and I think someone else on the board asked me a question. And the question had to do with what's the difference in two different parts of the rule. Whereas in, if you're a post-secondary school seeking to operate in Vermont, you can get an 18-month, for lack of a better word, waiver window of seeking board approval. Whereas if you're, if you're a post-secondary school that primarily operates outside the state of Vermont, you don't get that window. And that should have been a clue to me to go and actually look at the statute. But I went to Cassandra Ryan, who helped to update the rule, and she explained to me the, the difference, which was initially that was done so as to not discourage business in Vermont. However, the legislature closed that loophole in the actual statute. So that doesn't exist whether you're chartered in Vermont or out of Vermont. So there is no such thing as an 18-month window prior to operating. So now, the statute requires that for a post-secondary school to operate in Vermont, they have to seek board approval prior to admitting the first student. So that particular loophole was closed. It came up in the context of the Burlington College situation that we were working through at the agency where we discovered that there was, there was no longer this 18-month window for entities that seeking to open post-secondary schools in Vermont. That being the case, we decided since there was, since our rules really reflected the old statute, and when we went to update them, we never changed that, that we felt a better process to go through the rule very carefully to make sure that the rule now does mirror the statute exactly, not just with respect to post-secondary schools operating in Vermont, but also post-secondary schools chartered outside Vermont. And we wanted to really vet any changes. However, as you know, this particular rule is in between ICAR and LCAR. And so I reached out to the Secretary of State's office, asked them, okay, what can we do? Because normally, you can revise a rule in between ICAR and LCAR, but based on public comment. In this particular case, as you may recall, we had zero public comment. But what the Secretary of State's office informed me is that public comment can come from anybody, to include the agency. So we can be the public comment.
We are the public.
Right. So we are permitted to revise the rule. We're not required to go back to ICAR and start over. However, best practices would be that we would hold another public hearing, which we will do, and then another period of public comment because it's a substantive change. It's not just a minor grammatical or administrative change. It's, it's a fairly substantial change. So what I'm asking the board to, I guess, ratify that process, which is that we will then do a careful scrub of the proposed changes to the rule, make revisions to make sure that it complies with the statute, hold another public hearing, another public comment period, and then propose to move the rule to LCAR. Because that will take at least a month, maybe we can do it in a little bit less. We have to, whenever we set the public hearing, we have to leave the, the rule open for public comment for at least seven days post that. If I can do all of that before the November board hearing, my proposal would then be come back to the board, say, here's the rule. Now can I go again to LCAR? So that's kind of the status of where things are.
We need to do something today?
There is a motion.
Yep.
I make a motion to, the State Board authorize the agency to conduct another public hearing, an additional public comment period on the proposed revised amendment to the State Board Rule 2240, certification of post-secondary schools prior to the filing of LCAR.
Is there a second? Peter seconds it. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Can I just ask, how is this going to impact the Burlington, is it going to impact the Burlington College situation?
Well, what, what it has highlighted to us is that, one, there probably needs to be a statutory change because as you know, Burlington College was exempt from, under the statute, because they were in existence at the time the rule, the statute was created. So it's our belief that there would need to be, they would need to actually be removed from the statute. And so basically, it kind of resets the clock for those that, you know, exist now. But anybody coming afterwards is going to have to go through the, the new statutory process. So I don't know that it's going to affect them per se, but, you know, what it did do was motivate us to move for a change in the statute to get them removed so that we don't have to, they don't continue on in existence. Because as you know, they still exist as a corporation, a named entity, until they withdraw their, until they do go through dissolution. But we don't want them to then recreate themselves, you know, with donors and then come back into existence knowing that we have the records that the taxpayers have shelled out money. So that's just more on the agency's legislative to-do list.
Other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and we've approved the motion that sets in motion the, the rulemaking process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out the screen here.
What?
The screen.
It's to keep us awake.
Oh.
For those of you who can see it.
Yeah.
If, unless there's objection, I'll move on to Item M and give you an update of where we stand on hiring independent counsel for the State Board of Education. With the agency's assistance, three attorneys were identified. Proposals went out to the three attorneys and in a timely fashion, two attorneys returned proposals yesterday. I'm, because we don't have a signed contract yet... Because we don't have a signed contract yet, I'm not, in a public fashion, cannot give you the names. The process from here is that there is a, from the Secretary of State's office, there's a scoring sheet that I must complete to, before we make the offer. I plan to do that within the next day, make an offer to one of the two attorneys, and then once we come to agreement and there's a contract signed, I then will first notify you, who is going to be representing the State Board of Education during the rulemaking process, the 220, 2,200 rules, and then we'll do a news release, so the community knows who we've hired. This is a major step, obviously, for the board, to hire independent counsel, or hire any staffing at all, but under the circumstances, with the administration taking a different point of view than the State Board has taken, we have, in previous discussions and motions, agreed that we need to move forward, and the agency has said that they would provide the funding for the staffing.
It's actually your funding.
It's our, yeah.
It's in your budget.
It's in our budget.
Yes, it will be, once that budget is formed. Any questions from board members? If not, that's an update of where we stand on that, as of now. Yeah. I think we're going to recess and...
Is Amy or Donna on their way?
I'll call Amy and find out if she might be coming.
Why don't we, we'll go and recess. Obviously, we allowed too much time for some of the earlier agenda items, and as soon as either staff from the agency or teacher, candidates for Teacher of the Year arrive, we'll resume. So, we're in, we'll stand in recess for now. We're on Agenda Item Number H, it's really kind of the highlight of the day, where we get to play our role in the selection of the Vermont Teacher of the Year. This is a program that's run by the Council of State School Officers, and if you all know, in your packet, you have a scoring sheet, and we're going to hear presentations from three semifinalists, and if you would, on an individual basis, please complete the scoring sheet. And based on the testimony, this is a, it's really quite a high honor, for those of you that haven't been through this process before or don't remember. The Teacher of the Year for the state of Vermont competes nationally against other Teachers of the Year, and I believe part of it is that there's a reception at the White House at some point. So this is, and our role here is, we're not making the final selection, we're just playing a part of this, there's other players involved, but it's a very important thing that we do. So, would you like to add anything, Madam Secretary?
Yes, this is one of the highlights, actually, for the board, and what we tend to find is that we learn something really important from the field, about what really matters to teachers, and we know our system is strong because of educators, like the ones we're going to hear from today. So it's just a privilege to welcome you today, and thank you for all you do for your kids, because there are kids too, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the first person I'd like to call up to the table is Corey Smith, who is a fourth grade teacher at Proctor Elementary. Even though I've just announced who you are, for the record, would you state your name too, please?
Sure, my name is Corey Smith. Good morning. I want to start off by saying how honored I am to be sitting here in front of you today, speaking to you. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Corey Smith. I'm a snowboarder, a hiker, a knitter, a traveler, but best of all, I'm a parent and I'm a teacher. I am the parent with my husband to two wonderful boys, Maxton and Andrew, ages five and eight, and this year was actually a very big year for us, as we sent our youngest off to kindergarten. There may have been some high-fiving as we walked down the halls after dropping him off this year. I grew up in Vermont and received all of my schooling here. I am happy to say it is because of my experiences and the wonderful teachers that I had, that I chose this profession. I blame them for where I am today in every positive way possible. I received my undergraduate degree in multidisciplinary studies from Castleton University, when it was still Castleton State College, and my master's degree in special education K through eight from the College of St. Joseph. I hold a Vermont license for both elementary education and for special education. Like many college graduates looking to get into the field of education, I've held positions as a paraeducator and as a substitute teacher before becoming a classroom teacher. Currently, I am entering my 10th year as a classroom teacher at Proctor Elementary School. Or, excuse me, this is my fifth year at Proctor Elementary School, but 10 years overall. Proctor Elementary School is a small K through six school located in Rutland County, with a population of about 130 students. Over my 10 years of teaching, I have taught first through fourth grade, and have even taught a few of them together in a multi-grade format. This year, I am teaching fourth grade to 14 of the most wonderful students. As I have changed grades just about every year at Proctor, I have really been awarded an opportunity that most teachers don't get. Some of my current students are with me for their second year, and some even for their third year. This has allowed me to get to know my students and their learning styles, and has really allowed them to get to know my routines. My philosophy of teaching has changed and grown, as I have changed schools, changed grade levels, and as my teaching style has evolved. I feel the saying that it takes a village to raise a child is really applicable to teachers as well. It takes a village to create a teacher. I find that my philosophy mirrors my supervisory union's mission statement, that we exist to ensure that all students learn at high levels. It is with this mindset that I plan my lessons, and that I greet my students at the door each and every morning. I truly believe that every child can not only learn, but can do so at high levels, and it is my job to help those students reach their full potential. If I were selected as the 2017 Vermont Teacher of the Year, my message would center around the heart of education, the students. I would first like to address the students with a message. I want our students to know that they are capable of greatness, but they need to work for it. Our students should be setting their goals high, believe they can reach those goals, and then work as hard as they can to get there. There's a quote from Pooh's Grand Adventure that I often share with my students to motivate them, and feel it really applies to every student. The quote is, "You're braver than you believe, and stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think." Secondly, I would address our communities with a message that mimics my philosophy, that we exist to ensure that all students learn at high levels. All students can learn, and they can do so at high levels, but we must remember that students are individuals. Learning will look different for each and every student, and so will his or her success. Students need to know that we believe in them, and that we're going to push them to reach their highest potential. Students need to know that we are not going to give up on them. This goes beyond teachers and the classroom. We all, teachers, administrators, parents, and community members, play a role in the education of a young person. We all need to be involved. In my own experiences, I have noticed a positive change, not only in the school community, but in the larger community, when teachers and administrators, students, parents, and community members come together. The relationship between our school and the town has become very positive since the introduction of PBIS, and the opportunities available to our students have increased. We constantly have community members in our schools filling many roles. They help us build gardens, they read to classes, they participate in four wins, they attend our bi-monthly assemblies, and so much more. The mindset of it's not my class, it's not my child, and it's their job, needs to change. We all need to be invested in student learning. These kids are our future. I challenge our schools and our communities to come together, volunteer to read to a class, mentor a student, make open house for the community and not just for the parents, and reach out and look for members of the community that want to share their unique skills. I believe for students to truly learn at high levels, there must be a partnership and ownership of learning between us all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Kate McCann next, who is a teacher at U-32, both in the middle and the high school.
For the record, my name is Kate McCann.
Thank, sorry.
I gotcha. Hi, my name is Kate McCann, and I'm honored to be with you today as a candidate for Vermont Teacher of the Year. Thank you in advance for allowing me to introduce myself and share these remarks. I'm a proud graduate of the University of Vermont. I launched my teaching career in California in 1998. My husband and I returned to Vermont in 2004 to start our family. We have two beautiful girls, both of which are attending Montpelier Public Schools. After completing a one-year assignment at South Burlington, and a wonderful year at Oxbow, I took a position at U-32 Middle High School in Montpelier. My current teaching schedule includes geometry, geometry lab, and advanced placement statistics. In addition to my classroom teaching, I'm a U-32 Education Association Leader, co-president of the Vermont Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and the candidate support provider for those in central Vermont pursuing National Board Education certification, sorry. Teaching is an opportunity to make long-lasting, close personal connections with young people, to make a difference in the lives of others. Mathematics is my talent, to share with them. While teaching the whole student to persevere and problem-solve, while fostering cooperation, informed improvisation, and citizenship, I have the chance to share my enjoyment and amazement of the power of mathematics. Every student can learn mathematics. It's my responsibility to coach them along, as they discover what math can do and its relevance to the world around them. While visiting DC nearly two weeks ago to accept a Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching, I had the unique opportunity to participate in the Symposium on Active Learning and STEM Education, where I learned that the National Science Foundation expects that 1 million people are needed by year 2022 for careers in science, technology, math, and engineering. Yet of all those who graduate high school, only 4% go on to study in these fields, and only 2.5 of those percent actually take a career in STEM. Many things contribute to these alarming statistics, including that math is widely viewed as equations and not problem-solving. In the classroom, I hold every learner to high expectations, and try to ensure that there's equity and opportunity for all. It's important to teach my students to construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. In the classroom, students demonstrate proficiency, when they can explain and discuss their thinking processes aloud, make conjectures, and build logical set of statements to explore the truth of these conjectures, and listen to the arguments of their peers while asking clarifying questions to decide whether they make sense or can improve the argument. I strive to elicit, value, and celebrate multiple paths to solution, by focusing on the strategy rather than the answer, asking questions where there's no wrong answer, like what do you see, what do you notice, and asking for volunteers to restate someone's idea. And I encourage and provide opportunity for my students to reflect on their own learning. I persuaded the Vermont Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and gathered sponsorship and support from the University of Vermont Department of Math and Statistics to launch a statewide math fair. This will provide an opportunity for the students to ask the questions as they decide their topic. Our goals include creating an assessment to incentivize the active learner, inspiring curiosity, generating excitement around mathematics, providing low-stakes competition, reaching a wide audience, and affording a big opportunity for high school students to attain evidence to demonstrate proficiency in transferable skills and math proficiency through a flexible pathway. Teaching is a profession, not a job. It involves prolonged training and a formal qualification. I believe training comes in the form of pre-service education, emphasizing the National Board Professional Teaching Standards. Every student deserves to have an accomplished teacher in the classroom. With no common definition of accomplished, National Board Certification is the great equalizer. The process provides the opportunity to watch hours and hours of yourself with your students, justify your professional choices in the classroom, and the occasion to think critically about your next steps to improve student learning. It's the profession's gold standard for accomplished teaching, based on standards that define what teachers should know and be able to do to advance student learning. Now more than ever, it takes a village to raise a child. In the words of former UVM Professor James Barber, I would echo his call that we be the better person in the presence of others. Every day, we need to be exemplary role models for young people. In doing so, we should demonstrate kindness, accept and embrace our individual differences, be gentle stewards of the earth, slow down and look those we're talking to in the eye, and say our please and thank yous. If a young person looks sad, express concern. If they look lost, ask if you can help. And if they look excited, show and share in their interest. Only as a collective whole can we make our world a safer place.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call on Rachel Potts, who's a special ed teacher at Harwood Union Middle and High School.
And my name is Rachel Potts, for the record. Picture, if you will, a student and an internship mentor hovered around a laptop. The student is showing his mentor how to make a small robot move using a more efficient method of coding. The mentor stops, he looks at me, then he looks at the student and says, ah, the student is teaching the master. I think my heart skipped a beat. The sentence was music to my ears. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rachel Potts, and I am the internship coordinator and transition specialist at Harwood Union High School. I'm truly honored to be given this opportunity, and to be a teacher who develops personalized curriculum and opportunities based on individual needs and interests. I'm also proud to be a teacher who models equity by serving all students. If given the honor of Vermont Teacher of the Year, my message would be to collaborate and connect. We need to take advantage of the incredible resources in our communities and facilitate connections between professionals and students. In addition, an important part of being an accountable teacher is to start answering the question, how is this relevant? By inviting guest speakers to talk about their careers and their school experience, we can start to answer that question. Last year, I started an opportunity at Harwood called Career Lab. I invited a number of professionals to discuss their careers with students. They included a graphic designer from Rome Snowboards, a music therapist, a Vermont state trooper, a criminal psychologist, a United Nations translator, a senior writer for Sports Illustrated, and a member of Bernie Sanders' office. Students came prepared to Career Labs with questions for our guests, and were given an hour to explore a field that was of interest. One particular Career Lab stands out due to the lasting impacts it had on a student of mine, I'll call him Ethan. After hearing a VPR interview with Bruce Duncan of Teresium Movement Foundation, I invited him to talk about his work with Harwood students. In the middle of nowhere Vermont, which could be a lot of places, he's developing artificial intelligence with a robot named Bina 48. Ethan was intrigued and attended part of the Career Lab. Now, Ethan is not exactly a motivated student. In most of his classes, he does what is necessary to get by and moves along. However, the idea of working with Bruce and robotics brought him to life. I arranged a meeting with Ethan and Bruce, and we proposed the idea of a digital internship, which would allow Ethan time to learn a specific programming language while maintaining contact with Bruce over Skype and email. Two months later, Ethan had put in over 90 hours of learning, the software and programming, excuse me, the software and programming necessary to make Bruce's robot move for roughly five minutes. Facilitating that digital internship and deeper learning is more rewarding than I could have ever imagined. By providing these types of opportunities to students, I'm challenging them to take calculated risks, to push themselves beyond their comfort zones, and to think deeply and creatively problem-solve. In addition, it's in our best interest to encourage students to see what kind of career options are available right here in Vermont. As our population ages and enrollment declines, we need to start thinking strategically about the benefits of more community involvement in our schools. Last spring, I took a group of students to Dealer.com, and they commented on feeling like they were in Silicon Valley, not Burlington, Vermont. You know, Vermont is known for its pristine landscape, ski mountains and farms, but how many high school students can tell you about the innovative work that's being done by food scientists at Keurig Green Mountain? I know of one, a sophomore, who took advantage of a unique opportunity I offered him at Harwood. As an educator, I'm dedicated to providing quality experiences for every student who walks through my door. For instance, I worked with a student, I will call her Ani, since she entered ninth grade. As a person with Down Syndrome, it was difficult for her to really imagine a life beyond the classroom. We worked together for years, exploring interests, doing job shadows, and practicing employability skills. Finally, as she entered our transition program, we explored the idea of working in we explored the idea of working in a cafe setting. I approached the owner, Julie, about this unique opportunity. Julie was extremely hesitant. At one point, she stated, "To be completely honest, I've never even talked to a person with Down Syndrome before." We took small steps, and eventually, Ani's work ethic, charm, and perseverance paid off. Ani is earning minimum wage, and she works four days a week. She knows and greets her regular customers. She completes her tasks efficiently and is open, most of the time, to feedback and suggestions. In addition, Julie's eyes have been opened to the potential of all students, regardless of their outward appearance and perceived disability. By providing these types of opportunities, my students are able to see their value in the community and be a part of something that brings them meaning and purpose. We are all familiar with the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." Because I'm the third person who said that. Having two children, working a full-time job, and living in a small town in Vermont, I can tell you that every bit of that statement is true. But I can also tell you from my experience that it takes a village to educate and inspire children. And I believe we can replicate that throughout Vermont with programs like Next Step. Offering students an opportunity to plan their personalization through their PLP and facilitating community connections to meet content-related proficiencies can lead to amazing results. In the end, I believe that we will see more students becoming masters and perhaps even some masters becoming students. Thank you so much for this unique opportunity, and thank you for the leadership you provide to support our schools and ensuring each student is successful.
Thank you. I believe that completes our agenda for the morning. Unless any board member has anything they'd like to bring up. If not, we will...
Can I just say, hearing you three really makes my role, and I'm sure everybody else agrees on here, very, very enriching to know that you're doing the work you're doing. We look at the sort of the more mundane stuff, but to hear you right from the classrooms come in here and express what you're doing is just terrific. And it makes, from my standpoint...
I think that's an important point. I mean, we, in our role in education, we sometimes spend a lot of time talking about stuff that you wonder about on the drive home, how important it is. But hearing the three of you, it really is a highlight of our year doing this job. So thank you for all of you...
Can I say one more thing? I hope you also noticed that we have here in three people embodiment of three of the most important initiatives in the state right now. The personalization of learning and flexible using personalization to engage kids and bring them further than they ever thought was possible. PBIS and that engagement around building that sort of social, emotional cognitive base that enables children to actually thrive and take advantage of these other opportunities. And this profound commitment, not just to STEM, but to shifting the mindset away from equations to problem-solving. And I love that expression of improvised, informed problem-solving. So I just really have to hand it to you. You're a wonderful set of examples of some of the things that are most important in our reform agenda right now. So thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you were planning on staying for lunch as well. When you've completed your score sheets, just to keep them all together, why don't you hand them in to me? I won't look at them, I'll just pass them on. Thank you very much. We'll stand in recess. If everyone is here and ready to go, I may convene us before 1:00.
No, you will.
I will, okay. In fact, let me say now that we will convene no later than 12:45. Okay, we will reconvene the September Board Meeting of the State Board of Education. Just so the board understands, the first issue we'll take up now is Item I with Deputy Secretary Fowler. There is an Item K on small school grants that Donna Russo-Savage was going to give us a presentation. She is not able to attend today. She has a family medical emergency. So we'll postpone action on that. Although, Item J, Brad James is here to make the agency's presentation on the Act 46 proposals. And one thing I might point out there, that the agenda has been amended slightly under Item J. There's a proposed name change request from Franklin Central Supervisory Union that we need to approve. That language probably is on the table if you need to see it. It's not a major issue. But with that great introduction, let me turn it over to the Deputy Secretary.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Amy Fowler, and I'm going to be sharing with you today results from our Smarter Balanced Assessment. And in particular, we're going to be really focused in on understanding what it says to us about equality and equity of opportunity. I did make some changes to the presentation from what was mailed to you and what was presented. I'll send that out to the board so that you have the updated copy for your future reference. So when I started preparing the presentation today, I wanted to start first with the strategic plan for the State Board of Education and a primary focus on your first goal, to make sure that our public education system is operating, to have high expectations for every learner, and an equity of opportunity for all students. And so I'm going to walk you through some data to make sure that you feel comfortable answering questions about what the data tells us and some cautions related to that data. Whenever we're looking at the data, when you see a star, that is the state average for the data. And that data is created because every single student in the state who takes a test has demographic characteristics associated with them. And when we average their scores together, we can come up with a state-level score. When you see dots or circles, those are actually school averages. And what that means is in schools where the student group has at least 11 or more, we're able to come up with an average at the school level that we can share with you. What's important to know is that whenever you see the dots, they'll be the same size, but they don't represent the same number of students. And the charts are going to include both the averages for the state as well as those schools that have 11 or more. I think it is really important that people understand you cannot derive the state average from the school averages. And that is because some schools are not included in the school data. They're too small to report. And also, the dots of the schools, because they have different sizes, would aggregate differently. So a school that has 100 students is creating 100 data points. A school with 11 has only 11 data points. If you average them together, you'll get a false sense of the data. For our purposes, and because data can be overwhelming, I selected only three groups to look at and one grade level. First, we selected all students. That'll give you a picture of what's happening in the state for every student, regardless of their demographic characteristics. We also selected free and reduced lunch as a subgroup we wanted to look at, primarily because this is our largest student population group, but also because it's an issue that we're all very concerned about, making sure that our students in poverty have access to a high-quality education. The second group that we picked, student group that we picked under those characteristics, was students with and without disabilities. As you know, special education status is an issue of major concern across the state and how it relates to financing. But it's also our second-largest demographic group that we would be able to show data. And then I did not choose any of the ethnic or racial groups to report out, or English learners, or migrant, because we have fewer than five schools that we can report data on in any grade level for those groups, because they don't show up with 11 or more students in each grade level. I selected 4th grade, one, because it's pretty typical of other grades, but also because it's the grade level at which we start to see the change from elementary to middle school, and it's a pretty pivotal year in terms of learning. Okay, so to walk you through how to read this data, right here, we see that the state average, I'm looking right now at mathematics, and this is the percent proficient, which means out of all the students who took the test, their score was above the proficiency cut score. What percentage of students scored above that level? At the state average, we can see we're at 50%. So one-half of our students met the proficiency mark, taking it this year, the first year that we consider these results to be something we should use. And that's a pretty good statistic. We're pretty happy with that. When we look, however, at the dots, each of these dots is a different school. Again, this is 4th grade. We can see that it ranges quite a bit in the state from about 8% at the bottom up to 93% at the top. That's the full range that you can see in 4th grade mathematics. And also, it's important to tell you that there are 47 schools in the state where we were not able to tell you what their percent proficient is because they do not have 11 or more students in 4th grade.
How many schools?
Forty-seven. So the mean would be the average, so it's 50% is the mean. 50% is the average. And we'll look at scale score in a minute. So again, this is for the all-student group. The state average is 50%. The school averages range from about 7% to 93%. And 47 schools are not able to report data because they have fewer than 11 students.
Just to be clear, it's 11 students in that tested grade?
11 students in 4th grade, thank you. 11 students in 4th grade. Yep.
What's the most frequent score?
Mode?
What is that mode?
Yeah, so the most frequent score would be mode. That's not this measure. This is actually the mean or an average. Yep. I do not know. At the state level, I'd have to look it up. Actually, I'd have to have somebody else look it up because I don't have student-level data.
So just, I'm going to basically be restating your note, which is that 47 of 215 elementary schools, or schools that have 4th grade in them?
So yes, there were 215 schools we expected a 4th grade mathematics score for.
Right, and it could be 1.
Forty-seven of them did not have...
K4, K6, K8.
K12. 412, whatever it might be. So that's what we see for the all-students. Okay? Now, when we go to disaggregate the group, I'm going to uncover the first group and spend a little bit of time with it. So here, we're looking at students on free and reduced lunch and students without free and reduced lunch. And again, the state average is expressed by the star. So for free and reduced lunch students, we see their average percent proficient at 32%. And for students who are not on free and reduced lunch, we see that average at 63%. And that is a stark gap in percent proficient. In addition, when we see the array of schools, again, every dot represents a school. And we see that it ranges from about 6%, 7% up again to close to 90% for free and reduced lunch. And then we see for students not on free and reduced lunch, approximately 20%, almost up to 100%. And that's the range.
However, how meaningful is that number with 149 schools not even included in?
So this is a really important question. These dots here...
Please get that in the minutes that I ask an important question.
These dots here are showing the schools that can report. This 32% is every student in the state, whether their school can report or not, because we've aggregated it to the state level. So it's an incredibly meaningful number when we compare the state-level scores because every single student is represented.
I don't understand, 149 schools, too small for data.
These dots, right here, we've lost 149 of the 215 schools to show you their individual score. But the 32% includes every student in the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's not clear from the chart.
Yeah, this is part of the reason it's really important to go slow with this data.
So can I ask a question? So if you have an SU now that has five elementary schools, three of them can't report because they don't have the 11 students in 4th grade, they become an SD. Once they become an SD, they all get reported, and it shows up as the SD is one dot now instead of five or three or whatever.
Really important question. So the question is about reporting data, and this is part of our ESO work that we're engaged in right now, is how we report the data. If you start at the school level and then you aggregate up to the supervisory union or the state level, as you move up in those levels, we have to check for suppression at each level to make sure we're not revealing unintentionally any data privacy issues. But theoretically, as we move up to the LEA level, we would be able to see it at that level, the schools would show up, but not necessarily be able to attribute it to the building if their numbers are too low. But definitely one of the things we're addressing. I do want to spend just a moment of time, though. I think one of the things we can focus on here is just that the state-level differences are so stark that it actually takes our breath away. As people who are dramatically committed to equity to see a 32% compared to a 63%, it doesn't feel good and we don't like it. We should have that feeling. But I also want to point out this tremendous range. We have some opportunities to go study these schools that are up at the top, that are having incredibly successful experiences for students living in poverty, to find out what they are doing that we could share with other school systems. So we want to show you this variability because we don't want anyone to walk out thinking it is a foregone conclusion that students on free and reduced lunch are going to be scoring at a lower level. We see that's not the case. These schools up here are outperforming the not-on-free-and-reduced-lunch students over here. They're outperforming them. That means there's something happening there that's a promising practice we need to build on. Right, the next place we're going to go to look is now students with disabilities. So our next largest student group is students with disabilities. And in this case, we can only report data on 14 or 15 schools for students with and without disabilities. Now, the reason this happens isn't necessarily because they're, only because they're too small. It is also because of suppression rules. So I'm going to give you an example. If we have a school that has 15 students in 4th grade and three students have a disability and 12 students do not, we cannot report the data for either of those groups because the three students would become revealed by virtue of reporting the 12. So these are the only circumstances, there are only 14 or 15 places where it is either that both the students with disabilities and the students without disabilities, both of those groups are above 11, or one of them is zero and the other one is above 11. Those are the only options. So we have 14 or 15 depending on that metric. Does that kind of make sense why that would be? Okay. Here, we see again a dramatic gap. The state-level average, every student in the state with a disability in 4th grade, regardless of if their school is large enough to report or not, only 14% of students are proficient on the 4th grade mathematics assessment. This is the range of their school-level scores, none of them getting above 30%. For students without a disability, we see the average state score at 56%. For the schools that are large enough to report data, we see the range being between 20% and 80% for students without a disability. And again, this is a stark difference at the state level, and we can see the variability at the school level. Any questions about that?
Nothing you can answer.
All right. So this is what it looks like taken all together. Again, the statewide average for all students is at 50%. We can see when we start to disaggregate the data that you have wide variation between students who are on free and reduced lunch, not on free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities, not with disabilities. And if I were to show you the state-level data for students by English-language learner status, migrant status, or any of the races or ethnicities commonly associated with being underserved in education, you would see these gaps of the stars in exactly the same way the nation experiences them. But what you would also see is almost no dots for schools. Never more than five dots for schools because the schools are not large enough for those dots to be represented. So we can show it to you at the state, but we can't show it to you at the school level. All right. At the Agency of Education, both Rebecca and I prefer scale score to proficiency cut score. And the reason for this is the scale score tells you sort of the points the student got on the test, and it helps you to understand their exact performance versus whether they fell inside of a band or outside of a band. Our state average, this is the same test that we looked at before, but now using the scale points. Our state average is 2482. The proficiency cut score is 2485. So we're just beneath the proficiency cut score for our average, which is actually higher than we expected to be going into a really high-caliber test at the beginning.
And this is the first year that we're...
This is the first year it like counts. And by counts, meaning we're saying, "You've had practice, do your best at it."
You did it once, so now you're going to...
We did it once, right. But what I've done here to help you see is I've put in the proficiency cut scores. So everything in this box would be the equivalent of Level 1 performance. And you can see that we have one school in the Level 1 performance. Everything in this box is the Level 2 performance, meaning not quite proficient. You can see we have a great number of schools that are showing up in that box. Then we have this third box here. This is the cut score for proficient. Then, we have this third box here, this is the cut score for proficient. We have a huge number of schools that are showing up with their average in the proficient box. And we have at least one school that's showing up in box number four, meaning their average student performance is advanced on the Smarter Balance. And quite frankly, that was a stunning revelation. You may be tempted to ask me the name of any of these schools. I did all of my analysis without looking at the schools, so I couldn't answer a question about that when I was here. That's my next stage of analysis. So, this is the distribution. Again, what you see here, the star is the state level. Each of these dots is showing you the average for the schools, for each school. And, again, we're missing the data for 47 schools, because they did not have 11 or more students. So, now, we're gonna go a little bit quicker, we're gonna look at each of these. One of the things I think is really important to look at here is, when we look at scale score, the gap between all students and each of our subgroups that we're concerned about is less extreme. So, here, we see the all-student group is at 2482. For students on free and reduced lunch, it's at 2452. It is definitely lower, it's in that second band, but it is not as far low, as much lower as we saw in the last slide. You also see this range of data that suggests that students on free and reduced lunch, their schools are performing between level-one and three, with the highest concentration in this middle, level-two group. For students not on free and reduced lunch, we see an elevation of score to 2505 for the state. And you see a range of those scores. Predominantly, students not on free and reduced lunch, their schools are performing at level-three, which is proficient. For students with a disability, we see that the average score here is now in the level-one level, which is the lowest level they could be at. We see a range of schools, but we do see some that are up in the second grouping. And for students not with a disability, it's just above, just at proficiency, at 2485. And the schools range in levels two and three. So, again, big takeaway from this slide is, one, to recognize the gap continues to exist. By scale score, it's not as extreme as the proficiency cut scores, it's not as extreme, but it's still there. And there is still incredible variation among our schools. And so, we have this wide range of experiences for students, depending on where they happen to be at school.
Amy?
Yes.
In your analysis, I understand that you weren't able to use these 201 schools, because they were too small, and 149. But are you, as an agency, able to use them to help the schools identify what's going on? Or that you can't report them to us and the public?
Yeah, I'm so glad you said that, because I was supposed to remember to say that before we started, and I forgot. So, the data is always first about two things. It's reported to the public with a minimum N of 11, but school officials, superintendents, principals, and teachers can see their data, even if they have only one student. So, they can use the data to make action plans and continuous improvement plans. But we're not able to share it publicly, which can create problems with transparency and information sharing.
Well, it can also create issues with those schools, not just the public, but around those schools that have it. But I think I knew the answer to that, I just didn't think I heard you say it.
I am appreciative of the opportunity to be reminded, because I was supposed to say that when I started.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Are school board members of those schools able to see it?
So, school board members could see some information in an executive session with their superintendent. It gets a little bit touchier, because it could be that that then would reveal personally identifiable information about students to school board members who live in the same community. So, they have to be very careful about how they do that sharing. But it would be an executive session kind of sharing.
Thank you, Amy.
So, this is scale score. And, again, I think the most important thing here that I'd like you to walk away with, we see the variability with scale score that we see with proficiency, but the dramatic differences between proficiency, between groups on proficiency is less dramatic when you look at scale. So, when we switch over to English Language Arts, I won't spend quite as much time on this, because I think you've got the idea, and the data tells the same story. We're slightly better, 54% of students are proficient on English Language Arts. We see the same gap between students on free and reduced lunch, not on free and reduced lunch. We see the same distribution. In fact, right here, we have schools that are looking at 1% and 2% of students being proficient on free and reduced lunch. For special education, 13% of students proficient compared to 61%. The number is a bit higher here of the number of schools we can report. And you see this distribution. Really interested to know what's happening at this school, because it's getting a much higher result. Something for us to go explore later. But I think you recognize this pattern as essentially the same pattern we saw in fourth-grade mathematics. When we, yes?
I'm sorry. So, another kind of math question. So, you're, let's look at the all, you have all those dots there, presumably, obviously, across from the percentages. So, can, are you able to see which of those schools are larger as a school unit than we can see on these dots?
Yes, I did not bring this analysis today. Would be happy to share it with you at another time. When we do it by school size, what I can, the best way I can describe it to you is, it looks like a sideways V. We have so few schools that are very big, that they don't have a lot, like, they tend to be at a single point. But the smaller the schools, they range from the very high to the very low. The entire distance, there's somebody. And then, it narrows in like this. So, it isn't, there's no clear relationship that school size is directly related, or that the reporting size is directly related. It absolutely-
Has to do with the teaching in the school.
So, this pattern, again-
How about the leadership of the State Board of Education?
Oh, okay.
And then, I'm gonna switch over to the scale score for English Language Arts. The cut score here is 2473. Our average for the state is exactly the proficiency cut score in English Language Arts, and tends to be that for most of the grade levels. You see the distribution of where things are. The same exact pattern is emerging in terms of where data can be reported and where the gaps are. And in every case, students who are historically underserved nationally are also underserved here in Vermont, and it's an issue we want to address. Okay? So, one of the questions that was asked of me is, well, okay, so that's fourth grade, is that true of every grade? So, you have a handout called item 12 that was on the back. I've just pulled up the English Language Arts, and I've just pulled up one row, so you can see it. But when we look at this, you can see the minimum scale score, the maximum scale score, and then sort of the range. In every case, we see that the scale scores range from between 167 to 218 points, and it doesn't matter what grade level. So, this is a consistent, wide-ranging problem. Look at the difference in percent proficiency, we see that the percent proficient ranges are either a 66 percentage-point gap, up to an 88 percentage-point gap. And so, the question we ask ourselves is, is that level of difference in performance between schools, and, again, this is just for reporting schools, is that something that works with our goal of equity? And we would argue it does not, and we need to really work on it. You'll also see in the last column, where it says the "schools that are too small to report" column at the very end, this is letting you know how many schools can't report the data. On this handout, it's actually the second column. And this lets you know just sort of where we are with that particular item, so that you can have a sense of what it means for reporting data as we go. All right. So, these are the last two, and they're doozies, so work with me on it, keep your energy up. The question that we always have is, some folks will say to me, "You know, Amy, tests are just about the poverty of kids. It's just a proxy for whether or not students have wealth in their home and their home-life situation." And it's certainly true that there's a high level of correlation. So, when we're looking at this graph, this right here is the percentage of students in a school that are on free and reduced lunch. So, schools over here have between 0% and 20% of their students on free and reduced lunch, and schools over here are 80 to 100%. And with your look at this, you can see that, just eyeballing it, there is, in fact, an opportunity to see that as poverty increases, we can see a slight decreasing in the scale score. Slight decreasing. And this shows you where those bands are, again. So, all of these schools here are at that level-one performance. All of the schools here are in the proficient level, and all of these schools are in the advanced. And so, I can look at this graph, and I can see there are no schools that are getting advanced that have more than 50% poverty. But there are a whole lot of schools that are in the proficient range that are across the entirety of the poverty percentage. And there are no schools that are getting this level, the lowest level of performance, that have low levels of poverty. So, there's a relationship. But there's also a lot of variability. And so, one of the things that we noticed here is that at roughly 50% poverty, and it's not exact, but roughly 50% poverty, we have one school that's scoring at about 2400, that's in level-one. It's the lowest level average. And we have another school that is at 2540, which is in level-four. And so, at 50% poverty, we have examples of schools that are on each end of this spectrum, and we need to figure out what's happening at that really high-performing school that we can share with the other schools, so that they can raise their performance. Because it is not true that having a school with 50% poverty means you're gonna have a low percentage proficient, or a low scale score. It's not true. We have evidence right here that there's incredible range. We also looked horizontally. And what we found here is that at the same score of approximately 2460, we have one school that has 20% poverty, we have another school that has 100% poverty. There is something happening at that school with 100% poverty that it is getting that level of score that a 20% poverty school is getting, that is worth learning that we could translate to other locations. What's happening that we could share? And that's our plan for our next stage of analysis. So, when we look at these graphs, some of the most important things you, as board members, can do as you walk away, and talking back about your strategic message, is that our goal is to increase that equity of opportunity. We want to come back and always remind people that this level of variability in the state of Vermont is not acceptable to us. We want to improve the outcomes for kids, but that also will mean differential support and differential action, because improving the outcomes is going to mean focusing on those schools that most need the help. So, coming back to your strategic goal, you have one strategic goal, and one part focuses on high expectations. So, at the state level, we perform well. We're near the proficiency mark on our scale score. We're looking pretty good on our proficiency rates at the state level for all students. But there's wide variability, and some of our schools are too small to report data. And that's 25% of our elementary schools, 18% that have a middle grade. Only 2% of high schools can't report. So, one of our questions is, even for all students, if we can't see and share the data, how do we talk about it, and how do, how does the community make sound decisions about the educational services for their students? The second big question in the strategic goal relates to equity of opportunity. And so, as we disaggregate, we can see these gaps exist, and they're persistent. They are about the same size they've been for many years. We need to really address this. And, again, here, it becomes even more powerful. When we move to disaggregate data, that data becomes even more invisible, since we can't see all students. Of course, we can't see the subgroups at the school level. And then, lastly, is there this concern that test scores are just a proxy for poverty? They're certainly related, we don't want to lose sight of that. But it is not the definition of what is contributing to all of these scores. There are examples of people, of schools, getting higher performance for students in poverty, and we can learn from those schools and replicate their work in other places. Do you want to say this correlation that exists for poverty, school-level poverty and test scores, it increases as kids get older? It's lowest at the third-grade level and highest at the 11th-grade level in general. But it's never higher than about .35, which, those of you who like statistics like me, is not a very big correlation. So, our next steps, we've had quite a number of conversations, the people in the office frequently are teasing me about, "Am I, once again, looking at the data?" And I have the data chart up regularly in my office, trying to figure out the answer to a new question. But the very first thing that we are doing is absolutely soundly, out loud to the public and to you, recommitting to the very important idea of improving equitable opportunities for our students through our SS state plan and through our state accountability work that we do as well. We want to move forward in identifying these schools that have the promising practices and disseminate those to other schools, so that they can learn and benefit from it. And then, ironically, we also can see that, especially as the students get older, mathematics has a tremendous decline. In fourth grade, mathematics looks on par with English Language Arts. But by eighth grade and by 11th grade, performance is really low. And so, we are making a very firm commitment that we're going to, as a state, move to support mathematics. We have a special education professional development grant that's specifically targeted to supporting the youngest kids in mathematics achievement. Our career and technical education centers are recommitting on supporting math education as well. And this will become a priority in our consolidated federal grant work, that mathematics needs attention, in the same way we've given a lot of attention to literacy over the years. You might have questions?
You identified the question about the schools too small to use the data. So, what's the answer?
Well, so, I think, so the question is, what do we do when schools are too small to report the data? So, two things that we're doing right now, I actually left our statistician back at the office, very excited with a new project. We're examining the degree to which the student performance for schools that don't report, compared to schools that do report within the same supervisory union. Is there any difference in performance when we compare those two groups at the student level? Because one theory is, by reporting the data and having it be public, it increases everyone's attention to those measures and improves performance. And other folks actually say, "No, you know, it's a distraction to have it reported, and we do better just managing it ourselves." So, we're doing an analysis to see, is there actually a difference? The initial look at it is that it's half and half. And so, what we're trying to figure out is, in which supervisory unions is it gonna be a difference? It was a fun chart to look at, and I would have enjoyed staying, talking about that also.
It's also an example of how a simple question actually becomes quite complicated.
A simple question becomes quite complex. But the other question is, it might be about reframing where we think of the best level of reporting to be. If our commitment is to, and this is how we might frame the conversation. Right now, the way we post data is, we start at the school level, and then we come up. And a lot of schools are not included in that data because of the direction we go. But if we start by reporting at the state and then push down to the supervisory union or district, and then to the school, if possible, we'd actually be able to report more data closer to the school level, but it wouldn't be at the school level. So, we're modeling those things to see, where do we actually create the greatest transparency, knowing at the same time, it could mean that some school communities might lose their local data in order to have supervisory union or supervisory district data? So, it's a thorny issue that we're definitely wrestling with.
Krista?
So, looking at those results, especially the fourth and eighth grade, as you said, the difference increases. Did you divide that by gender, too? Because I know there's been a lot lately about boys and falling into, was there any relation to gender in those scores?
So, when you look at the item I-12, or I-2, I guess, I keep calling them a 12, you can see what the difference is between their scores. So, the minimum scale, I'm gonna look, let's just take eighth grade for English. For female students, the minimum score is 2499. For male students, the minimum score is a 2464. That's a pretty big difference for the minimum. When you look at the maximum, the girls are outperforming the boys on English Language Arts, and you can see that on the other side as well.
So, that trend continues when you look at the free and reduce?
Yeah, it, yeah, and, yes. The difficult part is, it's often hard to discern. In our school systems, in general, females are outperforming males. But then, when we flip that to look at workplace earnings or workplace settings, the disadvantage flips the opposite direction. So, with gender, it's often hard to determine which way we would examine that. But definitely, in our schools, females are outperforming males.
Peter?
The schools that are outperforming others in terms of free and reduced, you can identify those schools, so you can see a pattern over years, to learn what they're doing? Yes?
That's what we're doing right now. Yeah. So, when I did this analysis, one of the things I was really thinking about is, as a state board, what you want to know is, what's the picture of the state? And so, I was trying not to get too local. And so, I purposely didn't do that. But that's our next stage of analysis is to say, now that we've identified this statewide pattern, are there any schools who year after year appear in that top half of the graph? And what can we do from there?
Can you talk, we've talked a bit internally about the integrated field reviews and the role they play. Could you address that? Because I think that would be of interest to the board.
So as you know, we've been piloting our qualitative integrative field reviews. They're actually having a training today for the next round of pilots that's being led by Josh Foulier. And that is intended to actually help explicate some of these findings that we have. Now that we have this data, when they go to review a school, they're going to have the data about the school level performance quantitatively. And they're going to go out in the field and be able to see on the ground what speaks to the reasons why that data might be the way it is, whether it's in a positive way or a concerning way, and what might be done to improve outcomes. And so in some cases, they might say, wow, this school is one of those outperforming schools in mathematics. What are they doing about mathematics that we can bubble up to other schools? And it will inform that work because it'll have been seen on the ground. And likewise, if they're in a school system that's really struggling with mathematics, they might focus on that as a place to gather evidence about what is and isn't happening to provide good suggestions for improvement.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Fascinating work.
It is. It makes me feel nerdy and fun.
Now, we're running a little early and I'm not sure if representatives from Addison Northeast or Grand Isle are here, but we do have one piece of work, action, Brad, that we could take, take up and maybe take a short break while other people gather. The agency has recommended that the state board approve a name change of a supervisory union, Franklin Central Unified Union, and they're requesting that the district now be called Maple Run Unified School District. Anything else we need to know, Mr. James?
Brad James, Agency of Education. No, I don't think so. They, when you first passed this, this was their temporary name, they went out to the, to the populace and came up with a bunch of names and agreed at their first organizational, organizational meeting on the name Maple Run Unified School District. There is no, apparently there's nothing in Title 16 that has a formal path to change a name, nor did the Secretary of State's office find anything in Title 17. But they're not opposed to doing this. There have been a few name changes with union high schools in the past, predates me and everybody else, I believe. But the agency does support this name change.
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor of the name change of Franklin Central Unified Union, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the ayes have it and we have approved the name change. We're on recess. Can I ask where you folks are from that just arrived?
Here at the G.I.S.U.
From Grand Isle. And Addison, anyone from Addison here? All right, we'll take a, is everyone from Grand Isle here?
Addison is outside the doorway. Some of them are.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break and see who, if everyone's here. I do not want to proceed if not everyone is, is here.
For either district.
For either district, yes. Okay, I will call to order and reconvene the State Board of Education meeting in September. We're in St. Johnsbury, Vermont. We're on agenda, item J. We're considering two proposals under Act 46. A couple of general comments that I would like to make before we start, I don't know if I speak for the full board or not, but certainly for myself. I thought both these applications were exceptionally high quality. We've reviewed 15 or 16 applications so far under Act 46 and I was terribly impressed with the, the quality that went into these reports. And secondly, I'd like to recognize that both of these reports seem to go out of their way to involve the communities. And that's a very important piece in the success of Act 46. And then thirdly, the general comment that is, as you know, we've just enacted some Act 46 rules, which we're beginning to go through the process. And I thought the analysis of these two reports fit into those proposed rules quite nicely. So those are just some general comments going into it, trying to start things off on a positive way. As I think everyone knows, Donna Russo Savage is not able to be here today, so Brad James is, is very aptly filling in for her. And I would suggest the process we use on each of these applications, that we first hear from the agency through Brad. Secondly, we would hear through the study committee. And I know in, in, in at least one instance, there's a minority report on one of these applications that we would thirdly hear from that person. And then entertain questions for each of those three people if, if appropriate, as, as we go along. Lastly, if the, if there is a report of the minority committee and the folks representing the study committee wish to respond to the minority report afterwards, I would certainly allow that. So if the board is comfortable with that process, that's what I would suggest. Probably the most support I've had on this board in a long time. Brad, why don't you start? The first application is from Addison Northeast Supervisory Union.
Okay, first of all, just to call your attention to a map that I put out there. Donna hands these out periodically. This is just kind of the status as to where you are right now. The two merger study grant, study committees that you're going to be hearing from are Addison Northeast, the purple one, and Grand Isle, the other purple one. And you can see that it's, the state is filling up a little bit down the middle. Addison Rutland, down here, everybody can see, is, they, their first vote failed on their study committee and on reconsideration by oral, it also went down. They have reformed a study committee and are, and are taking a second whack at this. And here are other ones for folks back there. I apologize, I've never done this before. It will not be done as usual, high level of smoothness and information, but I'll give you a high level overview. The Addison Northeast Study Committee Report, I agree, is completely, is very well written, as I do, as I think with the Grand Isle one. The Addison Northeast is looking at five towns, operating six schools. The five towns each operate an elementary school, grades pre-K through six. They all go to the same union high school, which is seven through 12. They are looking to become a single supervisory district by merging into a unified union school district. If, if they're successful, they will have four years of incentive, started eight cents in terms of tax rates. They have deemed that all five towns are necessary to vote approval for this. If they are successful, they will have a 13-member board. It will be, the, the board members will be nominated by town, they will be elected by town. The, it's a form of, form of, it's a form of proportional representation called the large remainder. I, I looked at that, it was pretty interesting. They will, if, if they're successful, there will be no school closure for the first four years of operation. At that point, it will require the, the board to make a decision to close school and then the town in which that school actually resides, the voters would have to approve that closure. If they are, again, if, if it is a successful vote, they intend to be operational on July 1, 2018. The state, the secretary recommends that you consider this and vote favorably. And with that, I will turn it over to...
Are there any, first of all, are there any questions from board members of Brad? Thank you. We would now welcome the study committee from Addison Northeast. If you would kindly all introduce yourselves and that would be appreciated, all two of you. Sometimes there's five or six people up there, that's why I put it that way.
So my name is Patrick Reen. I'm superintendent for Addison Northeast Supervisory Union.
And I'm Jen Stanley and I've been the chair of the Act 46 Study Committee.
I just want to start by acknowledging the hard work of the study committee. They've been meeting for many months and for quite a stretch of time, met weekly, for hours at a time to really get this, the intent to get something together to be able to submit to you so that for this November 8 presidential election, we can have a vote, so we get a really high voter turnout, so we can really get a good sense of the will of the electorate. We thought that was the, the best way to do so. To the point that thus far, between the communications subcommittee and the Act 46 Study Committee, they've spent 4,522 warned meeting minutes working on this. It's over 75 hours of warned meeting time. As you can imagine, lots of time beyond that, preparing for those meetings and, and doing all the homework in between. So lots of really great effort that's to be commended to be able to get to this point where we're presenting to you today. So just to set a little bit more context, so this, it's really founded on, on this desire for something that we want for all of our students. And, and as we've talked about, it's an opportunity to redefine what we consider our students. Right now, I think when most people speak of our students, they're speaking about the students that reside in their town. This is an opportunity for us to redesign our to the students that live within the five towns of Addison Northeast Supervisory Union. That all happen to feed into the same middle and high school. And so schools are busy organizations and school systems are, are certainly the same as well. I'm looking at unification and we've looked at unification as an opportunity to support a lot of this really great work that's happening. So some of these things include policy governance that we've been working on. We're engaging in a strategic plan process right now, which it brings together ends and vision and mission and there's action steps. Our fear is, or really, I guess our hope is, through unification, we can have support for that. Should unification not really be in place, it spreads our resources thinner than they need be spread and these items that are so important begin to lose our focus and kind of drop off, which is really unfortunate because they're so critical to the work that we're doing.
That's pretty clever.
So I just offer that as a way to set the context for the basis for the report and sort of our hope in a unified board and unified governance structure. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Great. So I heard Brad introduce some of the information about our district, so I'll cover this pretty quickly. But we have five towns in Addison Northeast and all five of those towns each operate an elementary school, which currently operate kindergarten through sixth grade. We have one school that also operates a pre-K program, but most of our pre-K students are tuitioned out to private centers. All of those towns currently go to one high school, middle and high school together, which is Mount Ave, which is located in Bristol. Bristol is our largest town. It's about twice the population of the other towns, but the other towns are then fairly similar, Lincoln being a little bit smaller. But they're not radically different as we've seen in other areas near us. We do see some variations in our ed spending per equalized pupil. And something that I think is important to highlight is that we have worked already to reduce the general ed support staff that we have. And so we've done a lot of work on our student to teacher ratios. And so ours are actually higher than the state averages already. So we've, we've been doing work in that area. All right, the colors don't look so great up here, but Brad just gave you guys a hand out of this, I think. I just put this up to point out that all of the supervisory unions that touch ours have already had successful unification votes. Obviously, there's Huntington, which is part of a mud. But other than that, the other supervisory unions around us have merged. And so we are hoping to follow in their footsteps. So this picture was put together by one of our committee members. I love this picture. It really is how we are currently governing our schools.
The superintendent loves it too.
It really is what we're doing though. We have a school board for each of our elementary schools as well as for our high school that have different numbers of directors on them. From those, we make up a supervisory union board as well as an executive committee. All of those groups give the superintendent direction about what he should be doing with our schools. It's amazing how that is not, you know, more difficult to execute in that scenario. And then, of course, we also have the principals and the staff in this diagram. So what we're proposing to move to is a model where we have one school board. So we know who's in charge and we know who is responsible for setting policy, for monitoring that policy, and for working with the superintendent and just so many fewer lines. We really feel very excited about this and from my role as a board member, I can just say, it feels like we'll all be able to work a lot more efficiently. Not depicted on here, our proposal also envisions local advisory councils. And so we weren't quite sure where to put those lines on this picture, but that is something that we do, we have proposed in our articles. So Patrick talked a little bit already about all of our meetings, so I don't have to revisit that subject. But our study committee has been made up of, it was formed with 15 members. We did have one person step down fairly early in the process and we're not able to find a full-time or an ongoing replacement. So we have really been operating with 14 members and you can see the breakdown there. So our timeline is that our committee was formed by our local boards back in September of last year. We started meeting in October and as Patrick mentioned, we met twice monthly and then moved to weekly as we saw the deadlines getting closer and more and more work still to be done. And so we are excited to be here talking to you today and looking forward to the November vote, if you approve our proposal. So I did want to take a minute and mention that we did have a minority perspective on our committee. So we did have three members of our committee, one of whom I believe is going to be speaking with you today, who have really strong feelings about Act 46. And, you know, it's really hard. It's, people care a lot about the students and we're so fortunate that people do care so much about making sure that students get a great education. So that was an interesting dynamic for us on our committee. I do think it's really important for you to know that our committee established early on a two-thirds majority decision rule. So all of our decisions were made by two-thirds majority. That made a lot of our discussions take longer because things didn't pass the first motion and sometimes not on the second or third motion. It made us really work through what was important to us. And a lot of the concerns that were raised by the minority were discussed at length and they were incorporated in our Articles of Agreement in different ways. So I feel that while it is important to have that, the dialogue and the discussion, that those concerns have been considered by our committee. So again, Brad already spoke to you a little bit about the key points of our proposal, so I won't cover it in too much detail. We are proposing a supervisory district under the red provisions. We did not include any modified union. We felt that the benefits of merging fully were worth going for and we're very hopeful that that will be acceptable to all of our towns. We will continue to operate pre-K through 12. We're proposing a 13-member board. It's going to be proportional for the towns and those board members will be elected by each town individually. We had considered some at-large members and ended up with each town just electing their members. And we will be voting everything by Australian ballot. This is actually an interesting dynamic for our communities because right now, two of our towns vote their elementary budget at their town meeting on the floor. And so that is definitely an issue that people are, are very sad about. But we are, we understand that we need to all vote in one way and so the Australian ballot felt like a more appropriate one to propose. And I mentioned before also the local advisory councils that we're proposing. So in summary, we really believe that going forward with a unification under Act 46 will help our schools to be better, it will help our students to have better opportunities. And it's better for us to make this choice than to leave it in your hands at some later point in time. So that's what we're encouraging folks to consider. So, thank you.
Other questions?
Nicely done.
Thank you.
I wonder if you could flesh out a little bit more the, the local advisory councils and what, how, how you specified what, how did you define what their roles might be?
Sure. So that's covered in Article 15 of our Articles of Agreement. And in our articles, we actually didn't build out a lot of language about exactly how they'll work. We asked and we tasked our new board with developing policy to explain how those local councils will work. We had a lot of discussion and I think at one point, Article 15 was about a page and a half long. And we really felt that it was more appropriate to leave that to the new board to address in policy and, and kind of how could that work best for us. My, my personal vision is that it would be a group that would probably work closely with a building principal and would help with kind of connecting with the community. So it would probably be distinct from a PTO. It would have a different kind of a role. But like a PTO, it's really working with that town and with that community that's connected with that school to make sure that voice is being heard by the larger board. Feel free to jump in if you have some...
Other questions?
Peter?
Can I just ask one other, on the open meeting versus Australian, did you, did you ever consider doing... you ever consider doing open meeting just for a set period of time and then, and then having another vote to determine where you wanted to go from there?
So we did discuss that possibility. And in fact, Dave Sharp is from our district and he has said publicly that he thinks that we should start with a town meeting or floor vote for our first budget and then decide if we want to continue in that way. We had some discussion about that, but we felt that, you know, right now, 70% of our population votes their elementary budget by Australian ballot. And we all vote our high school budget by Australian ballot. And so to switch that for all of those people who are accustomed to the convenience and the ability for so many more people to participate by an Australian ballot vote, to switch that to a floor vote at our high school with people from all the five towns coming together, felt that that would be a difficult change for a lot of people as well. And even for towns who are accustomed to voting in a floor vote, going to a town meeting at the high school with five towns is going to feel very different. We did talk about writing in language that the article could be changed to change the voting method. But we were advised that that is the current law. So we didn't really need to include it in our articles because it would be governed by the current law of how you change your voting method.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. We'll hear the minority report. And if you wish to offer any further testimony, please let me know.
I just wanted to add, I think there is some virtue to parsimony in your Articles of Agreement. We're working with another district that approved Articles of Agreement about 20 years ago, and the law has since changed. So now their articles are out of compliance with the law. So if you, it's a delicate balance. It's worth thinking about that.
Thank you.
If you want to pass them out, that's quite fine. Thank you.
Is this the minority report?
There's some additional copies here, if anyone cares for a copy.
I left some back in there.
We do too. Would you introduce yourself first, please?
Yes. Excuse me, Ms. Chair, does the speaker, does this work?
It's, that's actually just for the, the recording.
Oh, I see.
Do you have to speak up and?
Well, then I'm going to have to apologize in advance. My name is Herb Olson, and I am a member of the Addison Northeast Supervisory Union Act 46 Study Committee, along with Jennifer, who is our chair. And of course, we heard frequently from superintendent.
What town are you from?
I am from the town of Starksborough in particular. Each town appointed their members, and I was one of the members appointed for the town of Starksborough. Together with Mike Fisher and Nancy Cornell, we have filed a minority report that is included within the report that Patrick and Jennifer referred to, in opposition to the proposed merger.
Can you tell us where Ms. Cornell and Mr. Fisher are from, which towns?
Yeah, sure. Nancy is a Starksborough resident. South Starksborough, kind of different, but still Starksborough. And Lincoln is Mike Fisher's town residence.
Thank you. I will not interrupt again.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Anytime. So again, we filed a minority report. It's attached to the main report, which we very much appreciate. And I'd like to offer some brief comments explaining why we believe that the proposed merger is not actually in the best interest of our children's education. Before I start, though, I want to point out that I have a tremendous amount of respect for Jennifer Staley, our chair, and for Patrick. I think they are really hardworking. I think they have great attentions. And they have our, our children's best interests at heart. We simply have a disagreement about which direction we should be taking in order to achieve what I guess are really common goals. The goals of Act 46, I think, are things that we really can believe in. When I first saw the text of the, of the legislation back in 2015, I was pleased as punch. I really was. Because it assumed that if you had consolidation at districts, you'd really get to a point where you could have equity in the quality of education that was offered statewide. And that's a tremendous, tremendous thing, especially for our particular school district. Just to the north of us, we have the Chittenden County towns, of course, you know, pretty good schools by reputation, anyway. And a lot, and then we have other towns, Middlebury, you know, great setup there as well. And also, there is the promise that operational efficiencies would really help with a property tax burden, which is, you know, really, really important in order to maintain public support for, for the schools. Also encouraged by the flexibility language in the statute, that alternative arrangements could be considered if they were really the best thing to do for your particular region. Unfortunately, you know, I think that the local districts, at least at our level, felt a bit of pressure that there really was only one way to do this, the preferred, you know, governance model. And I suspect that that is the best thing to do in many regions of the state. I don't know. I don't know the circumstances. But from my perspective, and having sat through all those meetings that Jennifer alluded to, in all the hours that we spent into it, I just don't see that the facts of our particular district's situation support what we hope to achieve in terms of the Act 46 goals. I guess the first point, you know, the two main points, anyway, I'd like to make is, I don't think that centralization of our school district are going to result in significant, have a significant impact on our property taxes. And I think most of the members of the committee acknowledge that as well, that the reason for doing this was something other than wow, wow, our, our property tax rates are going to go down significantly. That, you know, I think that's just not, there are some savings. They're pretty small in the context, the overall budget of all the five town elementary schools and the high school, middle school. There are some savings. You know, you hope that we're going to be able to achieve additional savings to bridge, to make up for the gap. You know, the tax incentives go down at the end of four, I think, years. If you haven't, if you haven't achieved additional savings, you know, how are you going to fill that gap? You're either going to cut something or you're going to raise taxes, same, 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 same situation. So we don't think that it's going to really help with the property tax situation. Second, you know, quality is my real big bugaboo. I, I served on the local high school, middle school board for a number of years. That, that was my A number one goal. You know, I'm looking at districts to the north of us, other places, and I'm seeing that, this is not to denigrate the leaders and principals and teachers in our district. They're terrific. But there's different expectation levels. There are different resource issues. And, you know, we just, our kids don't get the same type of education as they do in, in neighboring districts. And that's why I like the, the Act 46 goal about statewide equity. But I'm concerned that people will think that, well, we're going to have the centralization of our districts. This is going to make a difference. And I didn't, just didn't see it in terms of our deliberations. I didn't see it in terms of any evidence to support the notion that that's going to happen. In the meantime, you know, the benefits, the minority folks feel that the benefits are minimal. And yet you're still going to, you're going to lose something that is good about what we have right now in our district. And I think the key element that we have going for us right now is a really strong school-community relationship. And it's absolutely critical. I think it's critical for our kids' education. I think it's critical when it comes time to vote on a budget, even in lean years. You know, our schools in our region have strongly supported our, our, our school systems. And I think one of the reasons for that is that cloaks, local attachment between the school and the community. It was also, frankly, real, real helpful, we had a bit of an issue a few years ago with a former superintendent. It did not work out. There were a lot of people in all, in the community, within the schools, very, very upset at tone, you know, what seemed to be, what he was trying to achieve. And the local boys, the local community organizations were critical in allowing us to address those issues and move on to them and eventually hire Patrick, which I think, who I think will do a great job. We also think that school district centralization is going to be a problem when it comes to trying to get the best fit for teachers, hiring the best, best, best teachers for each, each individual school. There's a clause in our teacher's contract right now having to do with recall, with reduction in force and recall rights. If that provision stays in the, the one master agreement for the, the unified district, that will definitely put some additional impediments on the ability of leaders to be able to choose the best person for the particular position in the school. We have, I think, as Jennifer alluded to, we have a situation in our communities. We have five towns, five, five, you know, towns. We have two that still maintain an annual meeting where the articles, obviously they're noticed and they're, and they're debated on the floor and we can, it gives people a sense of connection. It gives people a sense of ownership in the schools that I think is terrific. I think it's really, really important. It's not the only way to do it. Other towns, I think, do fine without that. But it's something that is, we would feel, the residents of the town who do do it that way would feel is something being taken away from us that's really important for local democracy and for our kids in, in our schools. So for all of these reasons, we're hoping, I mean, we understand the role of this board. We're hoping that one way or another, we can hit the pause button in terms of thinking about this issue. These are really, really important issues. We want to make some progress. We think some progress can be made on our existing situation. We simply don't think that the way the proposed merger is currently structured is going to be the best way to go. Happy to feel any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Olson? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Does the study committee wish to respond to any of the minority reports?
I feel comfortable that the information we've already shared addresses our, our position. But I'm happy to answer any questions if it's run up any new questions for you.
Thank you. Board action. Board questions, comments, motions?
I make a motion to... Accept. Oh, let's see. I guess I should just read it. The State Board, I make a motion. Where am I reading from, actually?
Why don't you actually, if you wish to use the recommended action, move that we take action on the secretary's recommended action, which is on the green sheet?
Right.
Which, which includes that the State Board of Education votes to approve the attached report of the, of the study committee and approve the formation of a, of a new district.
Well said. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion by Krista? Discussion. Krista?
I suppose on the report, on page 44, the graphic that you've also showed with the superintendent and the roles, that just made it so clear. I mean, such a great visual to see that a superintendent really can't be an educational leader when you're, you have, it's just so messy, what's going on there. And to see simplification, I really think it will be better to have more time spent on vision than on just managing adults. And so I appreciated that part of the report even more than anything else. It's just the visual piece that you can see really how that change will impact quality. Because then you can actually have a vision, follow it through. You can meet, if you have a vision, meet with the principals, have it follow through the building level. So it seemed, I just wanted to say I appreciated that.
Sean Murray?
And I guess I can, I really appreciate the idea that all of those students are all of our students. And I think that that came across in your report and in your, in, in speaking today, that it's all of our schools and our children. And it will be actually everybody's choice. So I wish you the best.
Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And we've approved the study committee and the formation of a new district. Congratulations. Good luck on your, on your votes in November. We'll go to the Grand Isles, the proposal, Act 46 proposal from Grand Isle Supervisory Union. Call on Brad to give us an overview.
This, this is a proposal by the Grand Isle Supervisory Union. That consists of five towns. They operate grades pre-K through, or they, they, I guess they have four grades, pre-K through six in two towns and three other towns, pre-K through eight. Three of the towns are deemed to be necessary, necessary in the report. That'd be Grand Isle, Isle Lamont, and North Hero. And then the other two towns, Alberg and South Hero, are both They are proposing...
Just, just for the record, what that means is that when the vote, assuming the vote here is positive, when the towns vote, the three towns must approve it and the other towns are, are welcome, but they don't, they're not required to approve it.
That, that is correct. And I apologize for not making that clear. Yes. So, so Grand Isle, Isle Lamont, and North Hero all have to say yes in order for this to move forward. And then the other two may or may not choose to join. If, regardless of what they intend to do, regardless of who joins, they intend to be a pre, an operating pre, grades pre-K through six. They're going to stop offering grades seven through eight, and they will tuition grades seven through 12. And I'm sure you'll hear from the committee about that. The other, if, if, if any of the two advisable towns vote no, they have a window in which they can reconsider their vote or re-vote. It's not a reconsideration necessarily. They have up until November 30th of 2017 to say yes and join the new entity. Incentives are a little bit funny. If only the three necessary votes say yes, there are no incentives. If they move forward and then another one of the, the other two say no, or if four say yes or five say yes, then there are incentives. The eight, certain eight cents. If the, if they say, if the three move forward and say yes, and then another one votes later on to come in, there's still no incentives. If the other two both come in, there's probably the likelihood of incentives. They are looking at proportional representation by the town, by the, on, on the new board. It would be, again, the, the numbers are going to vary depending on who comes in, but it would be proportional by town. They'll be nominated by town and elected from each town.
Let me, let me ask you a, a question. And I'm sure I'll ask the study committee the, the same question. But I'm just curious from the agency point of view. When looking at this application where it, there, it allows a choice of all five towns or some advisable, some, some towns and other towns are advisable, looking at the, at the pop, student population and reminding you that under Act 46, there is, I don't know if it's a requirement, but there's a suggestion that, that the new school district should have a minimum of 900 students. If I read the proposal correctly, if all five towns are part of this district, the student population would be a little over 900. And less than 900 if some of the other advisable towns drop out. So I'm curious how the agency saw that in approving this, given that Act 46 suggests a district of a minimum of 900 students.
Well, I was going to, I was going to address that at the very end, but I'll jump to that right now.
Sorry, got ahead of you.
That's okay. Steal my thunder. I don't mind. The agency does recognize that this is, this would be small. It's, it's a step forward. The agency would not necessarily be recommending that this becomes, assuming this were a successful merger, even with all five, the agency would not be proposing that this be recognized as its own supervisory district at this point. We would like to ask the board to come back and revisit down the road. So that, that's kind of how we're looking at it. There's, this is not something where it's kind of as, as a preferred structure is what you were referring to. you were referring to. This would be more working towards either just a regular unified union school district or a more of a conventional merger, which is pulling in more people and getting a little bit larger, but it would still be fairly small.
Can I follow up on that? So can you speak to how the incentives work into that, that approach?
If, if everybody says yes, okay, this, this, that's the easy way to go. Everybody says yes this first time around, then they have, they have met the letter of the law in terms of conventional mergers. You have, you have four schoo, five school districts now that have joined to form together and form a unified union school district. They would then be, they would then be eligible for the eight cents off, they would be eligible for the, for eight cents, six cents, four cents. They would not be eligible for that additional, up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars. They would get the twenty thousand dollar study grant, but not up to the hundred fifty. They would not be eligible for that. Because they, they don't meet the, the more convent, or the more preferred structure or the regional education district structure or the side-by-side structure that's outlined elsewhere.
Can you, if they, if the three agree to do it, there are no incentives?
There are no incentives.
But if a fourth comes, there, it will be incentives?
If, if the four say yes to begin with, or during the thirty-day reconsideration period?
Because they're four, because they are four?
Then they could, yes, then they would be eligible.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that as well? So, so I know, we're going around the table. So if, if there's small schools grants and so forth associated, and if, and if a school says no, are they eligible for that? If there's four that go into saying yes?
If they're four, the small schools grants stay with them with the new entity?
If the fifth one does not follow?
The fifth one does not.
That's right.
Can I ask one more question?
I thought we were going this way.
Why don't we let, let Brad give his presentation?
I'm sorry.
And save your questions until after.
Okay.
And I'll even do that too, Brad.
Well, I'll have my own questions for myself, don't worry. So again, as in the Addison Central, if whichever set of towns choose to merge, assuming it's the three necessaries involved, then there will be no school closures for the first four years. If they, after the first four years, and again, if the board, it can be a board decision to close the school, but it will require the town vote where that school is actually situated, once again. As I mentioned, that regardless, if any, if any of this goes forward, regardless, they will be, they will stop offering seven through eight in the unified union. And again, as I said, I'm sure the Grand Isle folks will, will tell you about that. And as I mentioned before, that it's premature to think this will become a supervisory district. We would suggest to wait, hold off for a while, and come back and revisit it at a later time, seeing what happens around.
What is the agency actually recommending?
The agency, okay, good question. I didn't say that last time either, did I? The agency is actually recommending that you, that you approve the report. And then it goes forward and that it allows for the vote to happen for the, either three, four, or five, five members. That's, that's what the agency is recommending.
So at some point, that, that they will have to come back to the agency and the board?
Yeah. I, I, um...
Yeah.
I think so.
If we're only approving the...
Well, well, I mean, you, you have, you have the power with, already to, to, to make something, if, if they came together as a single district, you could say that they're a supervisory district if, if you so chose. You have, you have that ability, because that's already in statute. But Mike, I think we would probably weigh in on that also, and we would have some discussions.
But I'm, I'm really just...
If, if they don't, if, if, if only two districts vote to move forward, you would probably be considering them in the context of an alternative education structure down the road, I think you're saying?
Right. If, if, if two of the, if two of the necessaries, three went, voted yes, and the other said no, it'd be done. If the three went forward and the other two said no, it, it would be movement, but we don't know where that would end up. So...
I'm still not clear what you're recommending then.
That we just accept the report?
That you accept the report?
And then they can go ahead and vote, and then they're going to have to figure out what they're going to do after they vote.
So they will be back, if, if not all five towns approve this, they will be back in, before the agency and the board at some point?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, yeah, I misunderstood your question. Yes, they will be.
Okay. Peter?
So, from the macro perspective, we are possibly creating two outliers or two orphans or whatever you want to call it, if only three join, agree to do this or vote to do it.
Well, there are no more orphans than they are currently, because they're still within the same...
Is that, well, can you explain that?
Yeah, can you explain that?
Well, it, what, what will happen is, you, you have a situation right now where the three necessary ones are Isle of Mont, North Hero, and Grand Isle. Grand Isle operates, is, is a pre-K, the other two are pre-K, are, are pre-K six. If those three move forward, then it will become a pre-K six, and you'll have a, a pre-K eight on either end of it. It doesn't necessarily mean that they will become orphans. I don't know if it would make sense that you would say, that, when you come up with your plan at the end, that, that it's going to be implemented. I don't know if it would make sense to say that, that the two ends, South Hero and Alberg, would become one school district that's pre-K eight or not. It would also depend on what's happening around in Franklin Northwest. It's, it's a little early to say what would happen. So the, the idea of orphans, creating more orphans, I don't think is quite true.
Well, if we, if we take your, the agency's advice today and approve, only approve the report, does that leave the five town supervisor union in place?
Yes. And if, and then if it vote, let's say that the three necessary ones voted yes, it would then be a three district supervisor union. It would be, it would be the three that said yes.
It could be a supervisory union.
And then...
And so then would those three towns need to vote to allow those other two towns out of the supervisory union?
No, that's your block. Yeah. You assign districts to supervisory.
Well, that's what I was...
So that would be in the state plan. We address that in the state plan, if you're testing.
Sean Murray?
So basically what would happen, I believe, is if three out of five, is that you'd have one board for the three, and one board for one, and one board for one, and they're going to have to come back to us one way or the other when they figure out when they re-vote and not re-vote. So this is, I, I understand. We're, we're just approving what they've done all the research on, but they don't have a crystal ball to tell you who's going to vote what.
But, but no one does. I mean, I think the point is they've done good work.
I don't mean they, I mean that we, you don't know what's going to happen.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
How?
How, how it was decided that the three necessaries were necessary and the two were...
Why don't you wait and let the, the study committee?
Oh, that's one for them?
Yeah, I'm, you, do you have any, why did, any questions of the agency in, in proposing this?
Because I've done a fine job so far.
Well, it's very confusing. I think you've done a pretty good job of getting us where it is.
Yes, don't, don't leave the room. I'd like to invite the representatives of the study committee of the Grand Isle, Act Forty-Six proposal to the table, please.
I'm sure you tried.
Is there a way to get our, on the...
Uh, yes, but...
There's a map which is going to help tremendously in this process.
A little bit more in can help you.
Yeah, yeah. Quick clues.
Oh, okay.
And for the record, would the two of you introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Your role in this process?
I'm Andrew Julow. I'm from North Hero. I am the chairman of this committee.
My name is Barbara Berington. I'm the superintendent for the Grand Isle Supervisor Union.
What was your name?
So I, I want to just start by thanking you for your, your kind words on, on the report, and I do need to deflect a lot of that to our consultant, Mike Dewes, who's had a very difficult personal year, but has been of great service to us, and couldn't be here today because of those ongoing issues, but we, we do thank him for the work that he did.
You have a very short slide presentation to set the context for some of the questions that we're anticipating you would have about this unique proposal.
We got the button.
I don't think you can make it bigger though.
It's larger than life.
Yeah.
Good job, Maureen. Maureen, bottom left, the thing that looks like a window shade. Go over to. Go over. One more there.
I do. Of course. Yeah, so we're going to let the report speak for itself as to the content, and of course, we're available for questions, but we thought a little context would, would help, specifically in the areas of geography, which I think will explain some of the unique scenarios that we have put in this, this particular report. A little bit of just history that's relevant to also why, why things are the way they are in the report. Just the economics of the islands and the challenges that brought in. And I think it's just relevant to walk through the timelines and the different contortions that we went through to, to try to put together one union that would work for, for our region. And so this is the lay of the land, and there's more water in our land than, than land. We are three islands and a peninsula which is attached to a foreign country. We have two access points to, to mainland Vermont, as we call it, and...
Is there, is there a laser on there?
Yeah. So the sandbar is here, that's South Hero to Milton, and then you have to go all the way up here to Alberg to get over to Swanton. So when we talk about those three communities that we have deemed necessary, they are Isle of Mont, North Hero, and Grand Isle, and they're really penned in by South Hero and Alberg on the wings. These communities are the ones that have the pre-K to six, right here in North Hero and Isle of Mont. Right now, we have pre-K to eights in Alberg, Grand Isle, and South Hero. None of the students who have the opportunity to go to seventh and eighth grade off of North Hero and Isle of Mont choose to go to any of the island middle schools. They all go to Franklin County, Chittenden County, or, or New York. The discussions have not been limited to just our, our SU. South Hero and Alberg being on the ends had the opportunity to discuss the opportunities with Franklin or other towns. South Hero has talked to Georgia, Alberg has talked to Sheldon. Both of those communities are closer to those communities that they've talked to than they are to each other. So South Hero to Alberg is further than South Hero to Georgia, Alberg to, Sheldon is further than, than Alberg to South Hero. So the geography does present a challenge here, and just to highlight, these ones are necessary. And if they, Alberg and South Hero choose to go elsewhere, we're left with an awkward situation where we would have to hop over a town and look for a partner on the other side. So we would have a gap in our continuity.
Currently, four of the communities are going to be voting on November eighth. So at the time that the port, report was submitted, it was three with the probability that the others would come in later. It is now four. South Hero will be voting on November eighth.
And which town will not be voting on November eighth?
Alberg.
And when will they vote and why are they not voting?
They, it's unique, if you look at the geography, they, they're different in that the majority of their secondary students attend high school either in New York, in Champlain, New York, there's actually another bridge up there on the Richelieu, or they go to MVU in Swanton, or BFA in St. Albans. The majority of high school students, in fact, the vast majority of high school students from all of the other islands go to Chittenden County. Some of the districts send buses up, and, and that, it makes that convenient for them. And Franklin County schools send buses to Alberg. Proximity, you know, if they were to go to schools in Chittenden County would add an extra forty to, to sixty minutes onto their bus ride. As it is, Alberg kids, high school students get on the bus between five fifty and six thirty in the morning to attend high school, about an hour away, with the exception of New York, which is four miles away. But South Hero is now on the, is now on the ballot for November eighth.
So again, why, so but why aren't they voting on this? I mean, I, I guess I'm still a little confused why they aren't voting to either say yes or no. I understand that they like have students that are going in different directions, it's a long way, but...
Alberg, you mean.
Yeah. But why aren't they at least taking a vote to see what...
Okay. I'll be brutally honest with you. So Alberg, it does have a subcommittee that's looking at alternative structures. They have met with Sheldon, they've met with Swanton, they've met with other representatives from Franklin County. They are concerned, they do have, they do struggle with truancy in the Franklin County schools. Would they be starting that truancy sooner if they were to send students as early as seventh grade farther away from their community? So that's something that we are dealing with. They also are concerned that some of the structures in place in Franklin County aren't similar to those in Chittenden County, which are structured like typical middle schools. So, you know, you can come in at sixth or seventh grade and be acclimated very quickly. This is, the context of the school is more coherent for entering at that time. What happens in Franklin County is their, St. Albans City and St. Albans Town, for example, are, they are K-eight schools. The other concern that they talk about and that the data would, would reveal is that perhaps the middle schools they would be sending their students to if they were to leave earlier would actually be lower performing than they are on some measures. And then the final reason is, is simply status quo and nostalgia. They're quite content with what they have.
So I'm from southeast Vermont, and, you know, I've been to the island several times, but I'm reading all this from down there and say, God, this just makes geographical sense. I mean, all these towns are in the middle of the lake, attached to one another, but what I'm hearing you say now is historically because of where students attend high schools, to put all five of these towns together in one consolidated district, that's, that's the difficulty?
That would be one of the difficulties.
But middle school as well.
Middle schools.
Middle and, and high school.
So you have Isle of Mont and North Hero, who currently do not send secondary students starting at seventh grade, or they don't keep them in their town. Those students have choice. They don't elect to go to Alberg or Grand Isle or South Hero. They have a hundred percent graduation rate, they're very happy with the offerings. We surveyed families, we surveyed students, we surveyed graduates, and those students attested to the fact that that was a great experience for them. They don't want that to change, families don't want that to change, and that's the feedback.
See, one of the obligations this board has under Act Forty-Six, and I, and I realize, I, I gather now that you're only asking for approval of your report, not, not, not the approval of creation of a new district. But one of our obligations is that in, in making our decisions, is that we do not isolate school districts. So part of my problem with the advisable towns is, in, in this proposal, you know, are we, are we creating some isolation?
So the vote was fifteen to zero by the committee to do this because people already feel isolated. And in fact, I would argue, and Andy may, may make the same argument in a different way, that by Isle of Mont, North Hero, and Grand Isle coming together, that we're actually succeeding in the first leg of unification. This isn't new to those three towns. Couple of years ago, there was a joint study to try to do this, and this process simply, you know, illuminated the fact that this is the right thing to do for these communities. And everybody understood that. That's why it was a fifteen to zero vote. And now South Hero, of course, they also had a subcommittee, were looking at, were hoping for some alternative structures, perhaps suggesting they could stand alone because they are, they perceive themselves as good enough, have eliminated through that study committee, some of the partnerships that they would have, came to that conclusion at their last school board meeting on Thursday evening, that they should take this to vote to be part of that.
Andy, I think we all interrupted you in your presentation. Do you want to...
Oh, that's fine. Did you, you had a question back here?
I'm just, I'm curious about the, the North Hero or Isle of Mont, seven, eight students choosing in county, in county middle school. I'm wondering, is it because those communities don't, they themselves don't feel connected? Is just historically nobody does it, so nobody does it? Is it apparent saying, well, they're going to have to transition in ninth grade anyway, so we're not transitioning? Can you just say more? Because I think, I think that would help me understand how those towns interrelate to each other.
So, did you want to answer that one?
I, I'm happy to.
Okay.
Go first.
Okay. Yeah, so I was, my daughter was in first grade when North Hero made the decision to switch those structures, and the initial rush was to Grand Isle. Most kids went to Grand Isle. And then we watched over the course of about five years where that just slowly peeled, people dipped their toe in the water in town, liked the opportunities that they had there. I, I think that's a large part of it. I do think the social aspect of, let's get them to wherever they're going, let's start to make some friends and have them hit high school running, because that's one of the big issues we face in the islands, is these kids showing up in ninth grade and, and being the outcast. And so those were a couple of factors that definitely played into the reason that they don't choose those, those options anymore.
There was a, there was a multitude of public forums and opportunities for people to provide input...
Because that's one of the big issues we face in the islands is these kids showing up in ninth grade and being the outcast. And so those were a couple of factors that definitely played into the reason that they don't choose those options anymore.
There was a multitude of public forums and opportunities for people to provide input. And it was clear that people, families, and students felt like it would be very regressive if they had to transition twice, both from their micro school, I call them micro schools because they're quite tiny, to another small school, and then again to a Chittenden County or Franklin County school. We did do a mini-review of the literature around transitions. We found out that, you know, grossly generalizing, that the transitions were better sooner, especially for students who needed additional supports, and better when scaffolded well by adults. Creating two transitions would really be putting those, I think the language that came up in most of those public meetings was backwards. We'd be going backwards.
I just want to be clear before we move on here, that we would welcome Alberg in this union. We try to respect their viewpoint in that they feel that they have some reasons to look into Franklin County rather than back down into Grand Isle County. But we granted them the right to extend that deadline. It was originally July 1st of 2017 that they could vote. They asked for longer, and we readily gave it to them because we would like them to come in. There's a history of begrudgingly working together, I guess.
So, absolutely. So let's stay on the map. At last evening's Alberg board meeting, there was a presentation from Franklin Northwest, who are not doing anything. They've disbanded their study group. And, you know, that really doesn't present them with a lot of options there. New York is certainly not in the picture with Act 46, nor is Canada. And, you know, they are looking at with their subcommittee probably a March vote for town meeting day. What that will be will be determined by the outcome of this committee looking at the opportunities for their students.
And just some relevant history here. The islands were named after, it was originally North Hero, Middle Hero, and South Hero. And it was Ira and Ethan Allen, who are not particularly known for being cooperative individuals. Being surrounded by water, I mean, recently, the last 60 years of transportation, there's more of a bind. But there is a definite independent strain in each one of these communities. I think Alberg leads the board in the independent strain. We have churches that, you know, ministers run up and down to every town, and there's eight people in each church. And the...
To be clear, we're only dealing with education. We're not dealing with religion.
Gotcha. We can't solve all the world's problems. But town services, water districts, fire departments, libraries, I mean, we've had discussions. Can, we work together as a town, and each one of those has been pushed down. So the history here is that we don't work together. And unlike a lot of the communities that have successfully come together, we don't have a common bond. We don't have a union middle school. We don't have a history of working together on a union middle school. There's no trail that's been blazed for us. We have had to blaze a trail and do it all the while, dealing with people's children and their tax rates, which is a touchy subject.
Well, I would add that the experience of the Act 46 committee was sort of paradoxical because it was actually a pretty wonderful committee to meet with and get those diverse and multiple viewpoints. The experience of that committee in communities was somewhat traumatizing at times because of the pushback, because it uncovered a lot of deep-held beliefs about people north of the drawbridge or the exceptionalness of certain communities.
We're a commuter community. There's not a lot of industry or business on the islands. And most people commute to work. And generally, the more south that they are, closer to Chittenden County, the better people are off financially. The median household income is pretty disparate between South Hero and Alberg. The free and reduced lunch has a large disparity. The poverty rate among families in Alberg is three times higher than that in South Hero. Two times? Two times higher, sorry. And also on our islands with our lakeshore communities and our inland communities, there can be some difference just within a town. We've got big homes on the lake, you've got trailers on the inside. And that tends to be where our students come from, so.
I think we were attempting here, and probably it would have been helpful for you to have all five communities up there, but we were attempting to have this slide sort of mirror the map with these polarities. The actual highest free and reduced lunch rate is on Isle of Wight at 71%. They have 21, 28 students, 21 who qualify for free and reduced. They have pre-K students at North Hero's school now.
This might be a little painful. I'll try to walk through it quickly, but it might be a little painful. But this, I hope, will explain some of the reasons why we've brought the proposal forward as it is, with different models of three towns, or four towns, or, you know, these four towns, that four towns, all five. You know, we formed last August, and I think we started our first phase a little naive, hoping that some spreadsheet, some chart, some handout would just show us exactly what we needed to do. We knew we had a similar experience in high school. We all had school choice. We assumed we had a similar experience in elementary, and I think we've discovered that that's not actually true. But we felt that the big differences were around middle school, particularly with two tuitioning and three not. And so we charged Barbara and Mike DeWes with coming up with an objective comparison of what do we offer our middle school students in the islands, and what is being offered immediately around us, within our range? And we found of 27 opportunities that we could identify, 19 of them were not being offered in our own middle schools. And there was a difference between middle school to middle school, just within the island. So there was great disparity and certainly not equality in education.
And it wasn't just school-manufactured inequality. It was the inequality from the start, right? When you look at the differences of where students were entering from.
So just based on data and facts, by December of 2015, we were thinking we were headed for an accelerated merger, which would be a pre-K to six accelerated merger, tuitioning those seventh through 12 graders. But Christmas went by, and budget season went by, and sentiment started to build in certain towns against the idea of changing grade structures, which forced us to kind of put on the brakes, try to respect that opinion, try to listen, and see what we could do to accommodate it. We spent a lot of February and April looking at both models. Could we, you know, what would a K-8 look like if we were all together? What would a K-6 look like if we were all together? I think it was very awkward to try to come up with the same opportunities K-8. It was very clear that the sentiment to keep seventh and eighth graders local was to keep them in each town, not to have one school or facility be the seventh, eighth, but that there would be three separate facilities. And the Isle of Wight students and North Hero students would go to one school for two, seven years, another school for two years, and then transfer to a completely different district for high school. It was hard for, everybody kept asking Barbara to come up with numbers. The committee cannot really identify, I felt, what exactly a K-8 would look like? What would languages would we offer? What sciences would we offer?
Right. It was very confusing in a lot of the public forums and in general for community members to understand the scope of the Act 46 committee and not think of them as a school board. Why, you know, say things like, "Why don't you just start a school? Why don't you, you know, why don't you just move all of them over there?" And so there's a lot of education that had to happen around, that's not the role. But those are some, some of the things that can be conveyed to a future school board. So they're documented, and they can be conveyed.
And we ultimately found around April that even considering being a K-8 district was not necessarily enough. Certain, some communities felt that they weren't a good match, that maybe had a better match over in Franklin County or Franklin West, and that they didn't belong with the other districts in the supervisory union. And South Hero, in about April, decided to leave the study committee, or tried to leave the study committee, and work with Georgia instead. And that really collapsed the idea of, can we come together? And can we be strong enough? And can we build enough students to have a K-8 within our district? So it really brought us to kind of a make-or-break moment. And Barbara and Mike and myself really put our heads together and thought, "How do we reboot this effort if people are leaving?" Alberg was still talking about potential Franklin-Northwest merger. And what we came up with is, let's bring in a bigger district, and let's try to make a side-by-side where we can accommodate the different sentiments. That if you really value seventh and eighth locally, we can set up a side for that. If you value those opportunities that you can get in larger communities, you can do that by merging with a larger district, giving up school choice. But if it's important to you to have those opportunities for your kids, then that's your side and your option. And so we did engage South Burlington. We had some good conversations with them. They have got a lot going on in their community. It was clear it was going to be a much slower process, possibly too slow for our timeline. They're not forced to do anything.
There was also a lot of feedback in two county-wide public sessions that people were loath to give up choice. And for people whose children were already attending Essex, or Colchester, or MVU, that that was not, as good as South Burlington is, and as happy as the people whose children are that go there, that wasn't an acceptable option for them, to eliminate choice altogether.
And what really came out of that is that we toured those facilities, that we talked to South Burlington. We went to Colchester, we toured that. And that was really a turning point in getting people excited. It brought South Hero back to the table. It probably got two people too excited because all of a sudden, Grand Isle and South Hero were now talking about merging with South Burlington. And then we didn't have our side-by-side anymore. But I think it opened eyes, and it brought us to a point where Grand Isle and South Hero were willing to have a discussion in their communities about, maybe they would want to be part of the side-by-side with South Burlington. But also, if they were willing to consider that, then it seems like we got four, we have four towns at the table that would consider school choice for seven to 12. And if that's easiest, and if that's quickest, then why not do it? It qualifies for incentives. And so that conversation was had in Grand Isle. The Grand Isle School Board did a fantastic job of presenting it, leading a discussion of 50 people from all walks of life, students, parents, seniors were there. They unanimously, at the end of the, I would never recommend this, but they took a straw poll at the end of this and said, "Which direction should we go?" 50 people raised their hand and said, "We love school choice. We want to keep school choice, but we will tuition our kids off-island." So they wanted to go with that pre-K to six, but keep school choice for seven to 12. South Hero has held a similar meeting, and Chris Bowser's the chair. She's here. She has done a fantastic job mediating a lot of difficult situations in South Hero. They're not feeling the same pinch down there. They do still have a lot of the program, so it's been very difficult for South Hero. But South Hero residents by and large really were not enthusiastic about any of the options, not the side-by-side, even in the K-8 scenario, not the K-6 merger. And so, again, we came to a point where I said, "Something's got to come of this. We're about out of money. We're about out of momentum, I think. We need to bring something forward." And so we took a calculated risk, and we put a motion on the table in May to put together a K-6 district with the three towns that we knew were on board, Grand Isle, North Hero, and Isle of Wight, and had weighed in publicly and said, you know, "We want to tuition our kids to these middle schools that have these opportunities." And Alberg and South Hero would be included as advisable. We're not going to force them, but we're going to have, we'd like them to come along, do the study, have these public forums, and come to vote with us, hopefully, in November. So that carried 15 to nothing, in large part because we were not forcing Alberg or South Hero's hand at that time. We spent the last four months putting that report together, and here we are today.
And Alberg has, is not voting on November 8th?
They have declined to vote on November 8th. They have asked for that extension to be able to vote up until November 30th of 2017.
It's not clear to me how, I mean, I thought one of the important things you said was that there's the history of working together in this region of the state is not very, very long. I'm not clear, by approving this report, how we help you.
Well...
It seems to me that it might drive a wedge further in.
Well, I mean, we got four communities go, I think four communities putting, four island communities putting one thing on the ballot at the same time is more than I could have expected when we started this process.
Geez, I thought southeastern Vermont was weird, but I guess not.
I mean, I think if you follow Andy's logic, if four, those four communities were to vote in the positive, they would be expanding opportunities for their middle school students. They would be benefiting from all the incentives, including a lower tax rate. You know, we're talking over $4 million over the next five years, so it's substantial.
Or you've got the big mo, you've got momentum building and...
The momentum.
Yes.
I also, deliberating whether to say in, because I think often when people do good work, it's invisible. And, you know, and I remember having a conversation with you two about a year and a half ago, when I had some pretty serious concerns. And I have to just say how much good work you've done. It is not visible, but what we see is strengthening of systems. And I'm also starting to see evidence. You mentioned the whole issue of the pre-K and the collaboration between Isle of Wight and North Hero, which I don't know if that would have happened two years ago. And so I do think there are incremental efforts to really look at how by partnering you could create some better opportunities. And I know some of those communities really need stability. They know they need stability. So I do want to just acknowledge how hard you've worked, and that we do see that you are building stronger systems, and we know that they're going to create better opportunities for your kids. I just want to make sure to honor that in the context of the conversation.
Questions or comments from board members?
I guess, Stephen, I just, I'm struggling with the same thing that you're struggling with is, is it, I mean, I think in the short term, it is good for the students. And I applaud your effort, saying, "Look, we toured these other schools, and we're not giving our students what they could have." And that's really brave to say that and to move that step. So I like, I want to support that effort, and I want to support those kids. And it is just, it's just hard putting those other two outliers out there. But I do think it would make, as the report says, that it would best interest of the students, really, for those three communities to come together and to have some more opportunities. And even when you outline in your report, seeing that there are discrepancies in between those three for the, for K through six, and maybe starting addressing those. But yeah, I share the same, Stephen. It looked funny on the paper, and you're just like, "Well, I feel like we're creating more problems than solving."
We may have overemphasized middle school. I think there are plenty of benefits in elementary school as well. We have one sixth grader graduating this year from North Hero.
That's the last we hear from Krista today, I think.
I know. She's like, "Give him a break over there."
Wonderful. Our kids will never do that.
Listen to your...
One sixth grader graduating from North Hero's school this year. Had we had the ability, that child probably should have spent their entire academic career at Grand Isle. And Grand Isle's had the flip problem of having 22 or 23 kids in a class, which, okay, do you have 23 kids with one teacher, or do you have two small classes? Being able to balance that would just be outstanding for those kids.
And we would realize some efficiencies simply by bringing those three communities together. We anticipate being able to eliminate two rental spaces for different offices that could be moved into the Grand Isle School, which has space to accommodate that, et cetera.
I'm sure you realize this, that at some point, I think in 2019, this, the agency and the board is going to have the responsibility to make sure the whole state is consolidated under Act 46.
We are all very clear about that.
And so I look at an application like this, where there very well may be two towns that just wander off. At some point, this board was going to have to, unless they see the wisdom of something sooner, is it will have to round all those towns up into something.
I would anticipate you would have three that you would have to think about in isolation, not only Alberg and South Hero, assuming that vote isn't positive if it weren't, but also that center island district. It's still going to be small.
What would the effect, I'm not going to propose this, so don't get scared. What would the effect be if this board says, "Yep, we will approve this five-member district? All necessary." If we amended the application that you came to?
Oh, if you said it's only five?
Yeah.
Yeah. I suspect it would fail in one of the towns, and we would not have a union. That's my guess.
Fail in at least more than one?
Yeah.
Are there other members of the public that wish to comment on this application? Okay. Any other comments from board members, questions? Mark?
Yeah. I thank you for walking us through that because that's a tremendous amount of work that you've done. And so what I'm gathering is that this is, at this moment, this is the best plan brought forth. It's healing a community in terms of getting it to start looking at paradigm shift. And we're balancing that as a board with sort of being asked to approve a plan that we don't think goes far enough. And what might the effect have on the rest of the plans coming forth from other communities? And... And I think, I think as a board, we've realized that we were going to start to reach this point at some point. And, boy, you've made it very clear how you've gotten here, and it's, for me, it's hard not to, not to applaud the work that you've done with each other and the work you've done with the state, the consultants and the AOE, and not try and encourage you to keep moving on. And if I hear correctly, if we don't approve this plan, that might be a step back.
We would agree.
Okay. Peter?
Can I make a motion?
You can, and you've got it right there.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a motion that the State Board vote to approve the report of the Grand Isle Supervisor Union Study Committee. Is that sufficient?
That's sufficient, but I think for the record, and just so we're clear, it's the language that the agency was proposing. State Board of Education finds that the proposed formation of a new unified district by three, four, or five-member districts of the GISU is in the best interests of the state students and the school district pursuant to sixteen VSA seventeen, seven oh six C. If the State Board votes to approve the attached report of the GISU Study Committee, we're only voting to approve the report, we're not voting to create a new school district. Is there a second? Second, Mark. Any further discussion?
To be clear, that means that it can go to the vote.
Has to go to the vote before we can approve.
Well, that's...
I just want to make sure you understand what he's saying.
We will.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, congratulations, good luck.
Yeah, good work.
And hopefully all five towns buy into this.
We'll work on it.
Yeah.
That concludes our work today on this agenda. Our next meeting is October eighteenth. We're scheduled to be at the agency headquarters in Berry. However, that could change if the Vermont Teacher of the Year is named, we may meet elsewhere. Anyone else have any other business to come before this meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Let the record note that we're an hour and ten minutes ahead of schedule. Krista's moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the ayes have it, leave adjourned. Thank you all for coming.